Good evening Wakefield, welcome to the March 28, 2022 Town Council meeting. I hereby call this meeting to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have all seven members of the council in attendance this evening. We all just came from a nice recognition of our town volunteers. It's nice to see everyone. Item number four, public engagement. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone for public engagement?
Yes, I believe we should. Bill Quan, but unfortunately, I do not see him on.
Okay. If he jumps on, we'll see if we can fit him in. Item number five, approval of the minutes from the March 14, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion on the minutes of March 14. Hearing none, all in favor? So Sherri, seven to zero on that vote. Item number six, 383 Water Street update. Steve, I'll let you do the introduction and I believe we have Mr. McGrail on the...
Yes. While Sherri's bringing Mr. McGrail up, I think he is going to show a brief PowerPoint about a lot of the progress that has occurred over the last couple of weeks. I will say that it is very, very close, extremely close as a matter of fact. I think heeding the request of the council, I think that the property owner and the volunteers that are there are going beyond just removing items that were in our purview, which were just the autos, the unregistered autos. And we, our department has been working really well between Coral Hope and our health department and others, really working with the owner of the property. He will be back in there April 7th as Mission of Deeds is actually giving some items so he can actually use them in his house for his comfort. So that'll all be up and running. He'll be back in there April 7th with a great job by Coral and a great job by our volunteers, particularly 128 Plumbing and Electric that have just amazing work that they've done. So we can jump back to that, but then Mr. McGrail is here and can talk about the other perimenities.
Welcome, Mr. McGrail. Looking forward to your update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the council, for the record Attorney Brian McGrail, I represent Mr. Alwick, who's the owner of the property at 383 Water Street. As you know, this has been an ongoing matter before your council. You've been gracious enough to extend our time. We're very thankful to you for that, to give us an opportunity to handle this matter on our own rather than having others have to step in, which could have been catastrophic for my client and for his family. So the compassion that the members of the council has shown and the willingness to work with my client is very much appreciated and we're thankful for that. And we're trying to live up to our end of the bargain, per se. So with that said, as Town Administrator Mayo just stated, there's been some significant progress since the last time that we met with your council, which I think was February 28th, and the weather was just starting to turn. As you know, Joe Surianello and his son Jay, they volunteered their excavator in their expertise and their time and their fuel, as well as Joe Adagner in the house towing, they volunteered their services and equipment also to help us out and to get the property cleaned up. It's basically, I think, you know, as Town Administrator Mayo had mentioned, our order from the building inspector that your council is now holding in control of and has extended really relates to motor vehicles on the site. But we were asked in good faith to focus on other aspects of the property and we have done that. There's Joe Surianello has really created debris piles and kind of recycling with wood and metal and various other items on the site. So there's some big piles on the site that were, this week we will have dumpsters there to start taking some of that material off appropriately. So that is ongoing. I can tell you that since the last meeting, two large dumpsters, very large dumpsters have left the site with debris. And then I guess more importantly, as far as the discretionary matter before your council, is the vehicles. And I'm happy to report that since the last meeting of the Town Council, 13 large vehicles or pieces of equipment have been removed from the site. This is incredibly tedious work to accomplish this. As Mr. Mayo mentioned, I'm going to have a PowerPoint for you and just to give you an idea of scope and why time is needed for this, for what's happening out there. Some of these vehicles and pieces of equipment are extremely significant in size. They're old, they're heavy. The wheels are locked, they're frozen, so they don't turn. So when Mr. Surianello is actually dragging these to be removed from the site, the wheels aren't turning, so he has to drag them with his excavator. And that's why an excavator was needed. And there's no way a tow truck would have even dented any of these. The excavator is at its end trying to move some of this equipment. So what we've removed, as I've mentioned, are 13 large vehicles or pieces of equipment, including a Ford pickup truck, a yellow bulldozer, yellow dump truck, a GMC, a large red Chevy dump truck, a Dodge Power Wagon truck, a orange soil sifter, which you'll see in the PowerPoint, very large and extremely heavy piece of equipment, a Dodge red dump truck, old, old International red dump truck, a Chevy Blazer. Mr. Adagner was able to take that out with his tow truck when we got it to the front of the property. An old Dodge SUV that Mr. Adagner was able to take out once Joe Surianello dragged it out from the rear of the property. A massive red soil sifter, a large paving machine or roller, an old fashioned roller and a small roller. So I think it might be helpful, if I may, Madam Chair, if I could ask WCAT to put up the PowerPoint so I can give you an idea of some of the operations that have been going on at this property. So the first is, this is the yellow bulldozer. You can kind of see how this is, you know, was really in the property and not, you know, there's no way anything's going to pull this out. An extremely heavy piece of equipment with floating wheels, meaning that the suspension goes up and down, the wheels don't, all the wheels don't turn. The bucket was locked down, so Joe had, you'll see as we go on that Joe had to get this with his excavator and pull it out. So that was the yellow bulldozer. Next slide, please. Here it is. It's been pulled out, an extremely heavy piece of equipment that is tough to move, but we got it out. The next picture, please. This shows you, so what has to happen here, these pieces of equipment don't go on a tow truck. Tow trucks can't carry these things. They weigh way too much and they're too high. So we actually had to have a company, it's a flatbed, that gets backed in. As you know, the access to this property is somewhat difficult, so this flatbed has to nurture its way into the property. And then these heavy pieces of equipment need to be loaded by Joe Surianello with his excavator. That machine is strong enough to, in many instances, pick these things right up or attach a chain to kind of gradually get them on. So you can see, this is the excavator right next to the dozer. This is a chain that you would connect to various pots to kind of nurture it on to the trailer. Very tedious, extremely time consuming to do it in a safe manner. Next slide, please. So this is our rigger who takes this stuff away and helps load it. You can see that the bulldozer is now on the trailer. It's all chained on for safe transportation, taken away and disposed of properly. And this is that orange soil sifter that I told you about. This had to be pulled out from the rear of the property, had no wheels on it, so it's extremely difficult and heavy to get out, but Joe was able to get this out. And again, this is something that technically wouldn't be included under your order, but as we've said in good faith, we're taking a lot of stuff out of there just to, you know, move this in the right direction and get things done right. Next slide, please. This is just, shows you how these are loaded on and then they're off to recycling. So next. This is the yellow GMC truck I talked about. You can see it had no rear end and Joe was able to pull this out. Wheels were frozen and then you can see with the chain, the way these have to be put on the flatbed. This was not an all, this was not all one day. We've had four flatbeds since February 28th. It's about a half a day event to get these loaded on safely and chained on for transportation. So next, please. So you can see the yellow one is loaded and now this is the red Chevy dump truck, which Joe is in the process. You can see his excavator kind of treads here. Many times he's able to lift them a little bit and actually just push them on with the blade of his excavator. So next. This shows you some of the smaller vehicles, not too many, but this was the Ford pickup that we told you about. This actually had no rear wheels on it and Joe's able to just pick this right up with his excavator. That shows you how powerful that machine is and that it's needed for this job. Next. And this is interesting, Joe's actually able to put this pickup in the bed of that truck, dump truck for transportation. They strap everything down. So just an efficient way to get more things out of there at one time. So this shows you those. You get the yellow truck, the red dump truck and the pickup truck in the bed, ready to go off. Site, that was another day's event. Next day, these were two old, new old, well, two different old dump trucks. This is the old Dodge and International. You can see actually, there's a steam roller that Joe was able to pull out that was put, that was one of the rollers that was able to go on the back of this truck. This was another day. Joe had to pull both of these trucks out. They both had frozen wheels, so those tires don't turn. It's a process and kudos to him. He really knows what he's doing and how to get this done. And the rigger that comes with the trucking company is extremely helpful too. So this was another day and all of this was taken off site. This is, this is just a photo of the Dodge SUV that was taken about. I think Counselor Dombrowski, you were on the site. This was that truck that was way up on the hill that everyone said, you know, how are we going to get that down? And kind of, I guess you try to get some humor, so when we're on the site, Joe looked at me and he said, "How are we going to get down?" And I said, "I'm the lawyer, I have no idea." And he did it. And this is his son Jay. You know, I mean, I really am, you know, just proud of the Surianello, just a great family. I mean, Joe and Jay's in business with his dad and here they are both volunteering and working hand in hand on how to put the chains on and just extremely cautious, safety first the way they operate. And they were able to pull this out. And once they got that out off the hill, Mr. Adagner was able to take that off to auto demo plant. So, next, please. This is the red sifter. This is a gigantic piece of equipment that had no wheels on it. You can see here that Joe has a chain on it and Jay is kind of guiding him on how to get it out. This was an event, this took about, this took about three or four hours to get this out to the front of the property to have it ready to go. Next. This is the roller that I told you about that had to get loaded on. So this is Joe, you can see him and he's loading it with the chain on the flatbed. Again, this is another day, more equipment on another day. We pretty much have been out there for two weeks straight. I've been out there every day with them, working with them and working, you know, to make sure everything is done right and so I can keep tracks on what's going on personally. And we pretty much have gone two weeks straight. We weren't out there today with the weather, but we'll be back shortly. So, next, please. This is that heavy red sifter that I talked about, just a very large piece of equipment. As you can see, it had no wheels on it, so dragging that out was not easy, very top heavy. And this is the rigger getting it onto his truck. Everything gets chained on safely for transportation to recycling and it's off. I just wanted to point out, before I get to 128, I also want to say, and I think it's important, that Mr. Alwick, who wasn't able to be here tonight, he's basically exhausted, he's been there every day himself, working, working with Joe and Jay. He has a bobcat, he's been extremely helpful. So this isn't like Joe and Jay are showing up and doing it for him or Joe Adagner. Steve Alwick is out there every day at 7:00 in the morning, all day long, working and helping loading these vehicles. He is a very skilled machine operator, so he has a lot of knowledge that he instills in these young guys on getting this stuff off. So, you know, I'm really happy to report that he's taking this on himself. He's certainly getting the help that he needs, but he's a big part of what's happening out there on the property. And I think that's important to state and good for him. Onto 128. 128 Plumbing and Heating, a great Wakefield company. We hear them on the radio, advertising all the time, they're so successful. They have volunteered to do improvements in the house, as Town Administrator Mayo mentioned. They've had two trucks out there every day. I was out there today. They actually had five of their vans out there today with about 10 guys working on the property and doing all the electrical and plumbing and heating that needs to be done for Mr. Alwick to get back into the property at no charge. They're volunteering to do that. And see, that number of their personnel out there, to me, was outstanding today. So, next. I think that's it on that end. I'm sure the council wonders what's left. So after all that, I think good news that I reported tonight is what we have in waiting. We have a backhoe that has been pulled out and is waiting to be transported. We have, that is left, technically not a vehicle, but we're going to get it out of there. We have three pickup trucks, a box van, a Buick sedan and a Ford, small Ford dump truck. So for vehicles, we have three pickups, a box van, a sedan and a dump truck. So we're like six or seven vehicles, I think it's seven compared to where we've come. Thinking, as you know, so many vehicles off of there over the past month and a half. This is very attainable. The only thing is, we need more time to do this because some of these vehicles are in compromised spots as far as being able to safely get at them. There's certain other debris that we have to get out of the way first, so we're going to have to get dumpsters in there to dispose of some debris, which is going to allow proper access to these vehicles in a safe manner to get them out of there. And we will get them out of there and get them out as quick as we can. I think on one of them that we're going to need a crane. I don't think Joe's machine will be able to deal with that. And I'm happy to report that I approached Ray Lottin of Lottin Welding, another great Wakefield resident. Ray has lived in Wakefield, raised his family here. He owns a very successful welding company in Popsfield. And I called Ray and I said, "Ray," and told him what was going on. I said, "I think we might need a crane." And he said, "I've got four of them." So he said, "Whatever you need, I'll come down to the property and figure out what size you need and I'll bring it down and I'll take care of what you need down there." So he said, "I feel fortunate to be able to help." So I'm going to meet Ray at the property tomorrow so he can take a look at it. So that's where we are. I think we've made some great progress. I think, we're not there yet, you know, I think we're on the 20 yard line going in and we want to get across the goal line. And I think we will. So, you know, I think we're at a deadline and I will respectfully request if the council would consider extending this to your next meeting on April 25th. And my goal is at that point to be back here and tell you that we're done. So we're happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
So essentially, you're looking for another 30-day, more or less, extension?
Yeah, and a big part of that 30 days is going to be, you know, I mean, I think if you said you wanted to get the vehicles out of there in a week, we could do it, but it would make a mess of the property, meaning we would have debris everywhere to get at it. We'd have the, in order to comply, we would have the excavator just having to throw stuff aside and rather than do this in an organized fashion to be able to get dumpsters in there and properly dispose of some of the debris. It's kind of, it's a better process to go about it that way. I think it's better for everybody.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I'll just say, first off, thank you McGrail for the presentation. Having been on the property and walked extensively, I can say that the pictures I don't really think do it justice because these photos actually look better than the conditions on site. Things are just buried under, you know, under more items and more items. And so the fact that you see these standalone, you know, vehicles and the like being pulled out, extracted out, I think is important. I do also, we have the balancing here, and I do also want to recognize the fact that we have a lot of neighbors that have been incredibly patient during this process. And I'm very encouraged by what Mr. McGrail has presented tonight, but I also don't lose sight of the fact that these neighbors, you know, have been incredibly inconvenienced and then they've raised considerable concern and they're right to do so. And so I don't want them to be lost in all of this. We're talking about the owner, but we also need to think about the neighbor, neighbors that are impacted by this. My position with this is, and as Mr. McGrail alluded to, I want to see us get the best end result that we can. So if we have the ability and the willingness on behalf of the owner, Mr. McGrail, to continue to not just comply as is the letter of the law, but instead go above and beyond, I have no issue with that 30 days because I think you have demonstrated considerable progress having been made. If the owner will commit to continuing to do that, again, on a voluntary basis, because to your point, it's not required. But I think that would go a very long way to address a lot of the concerns people have had. I think we'll end up with a better product as a result. And I don't want to just see some, a few, you know, wheeled vehicles pulled off with a bunch of junk or whatever you want to call it strewn across the property. I don't think that that's the end result we're looking for here, nor do I think it's the end result the neighbors are looking for here. So I would be in favor of the 30 days, again, with the ongoing commitment, Mr. McGrail, understanding it to be a voluntary one, that your client will continue and the volunteers will continue to make best efforts to clean up this property to the greatest extent possible.
That's what we're trying to do.
So if we have that kind of commitment, I think it would go a long way, Mr. McGrail.
Yeah, I think we've shown that commitment, Mr. Dombrowski. I think, you know, as I've said, my client's out there every day. He's committed to, you know, I guess, you know, clean up the property and to get these vehicles off. So I think actions speak louder than words and I think our actions to date show that that's our intention. And it is our intention and we'll continue to move in that, in that way. That's what we want to do. So.
Counselor, please.
Mr. McGrail, just to be entirely clear, some weeks ago, I believe we discussed a black truck that was on the property. Is that ultimately going to be removed? You had indicated it might be on a property, part of a property dispute. Will that also be gone?
That will be gone, Mr. McGrail. Yeah, that's one of the vehicles that, that's one of the vehicles that I, it's one of the pickup trucks that I referenced.
That still remains, but will also be part of the removal.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just a minute, Madam Chair. One other point, Mr. McGrail. I know that came up, there was some issue with some glass on Water Street from some of the removal. And I know Mr. Mayo was incredibly responsive to the neighbors in that regard. I would just ask that going forward, if, over the next 30-day period, assuming that it gets voted on, if those sorts of issues are flagged to you or to anyone, if someone could reach out to Town Hall immediately, I think that would go a long way to allay some of the neighbor concerns. And I get that, you know.
Right, absolutely.
Just like next to a construction site or whatever the case is, I get that. So, and again, Mr., I think Mr. Mayo was incredibly responsive and very quick, but just a little more than that's noticed and that sort of thing, I think would be helpful for us.
What was, what was that issue? I didn't know about that issue because I've been on the site every day that a load has been taken off and I didn't, and I'm there till the end and I leave, I saw no glass or no debris. We're very careful about that, so.
There were concerns, there was, there were reporting of broken glass that had been on Water Street in both directions outside of the, off the property.
I would dispute that that came from our site. I really would because I am there, I have, every day that a load, every time that a load has been taken off of that property, I've been there personally, every day. So, and I'm the last one to leave. So I check it and I don't, I don't, I have never seen, I look at it for that purpose. I just want to bring up that point, that, you know, I think we've been extremely respectful in the way that we've gone about this. And to the neighbors, you know, I guess, you know, they haven't bothered us either. So, you know, they've been fine. You know, it's not like, there's been no, no actions that have been impending our progress or getting in our way and we're grateful for that. But we've been, you know, I just want to say, we've tried to be very respectful and we look at the property and outside the property when we leave. So I, that's why I just had to make that point. I dispute whether that came from our site, maybe it was something else.
Okay.
But we will in the future watch it to make sure.
I think that's all, I think that's all we ask. I don't think we need to belabor it. So if there's no more discussion, I'll have a motion to, I'm not sure it actually is quite 30 days, so let's just say until our meeting on April 25th. The motion.
Still moved. Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor of extending until April 25th? Seven, zero. I didn't exactly say what the order is, the order until the 25th. We know what it is. Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you very much.
Item seven is donations, and I think, Steve, you were going to clarify what this is.
Right, and this is actually a little bit connected to the site. So we do have $6,000 in donations. The donors wish to be anonymous and this is to defray any town costs involved in the cleanup of the 383 Water Street site. Very grateful to live in such a wonderful community with business and others that want to help out.
Very generous, very touching.
So we'd like the council to accept that if they don't mind.
That's great. Motion to accept $6,000?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Discussion on a motion to accept $6,000 for the cleanup towards 383 anonymous? Thank you. No? Okay, all in favor?
And I have to say, thank you. Mr. McGrail is there every day because he talks to me every day and sends me pictures every day. And I've been out there many days and he actually does have his gloves on, is actually throwing things and dumpsters at the same time. So he has gone above and beyond.
It's nice to see progress there for everybody involved.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eight, fiscal year 2023 budgets and Finance Committee Subcommittee recommendations. The two budgets we're talking about tonight are really courtesy budgets from this...
No, actually, the vote you vote on.
Oh, the vote we do vote on, yeah. Okay. So the first being the Northeast Vocational School. I don't know, I think we have a number of representatives from the vocational school here.
Yes, and while you're doing that...
The power's on and Jay should be coming over.
Madam Chair, while you're doing that, I'm going to pinch it for Kevin. And I have my binder, I know Maureen likes that when I have my binder.
You need it if you're pinshitting for Kevin.
I do, I do, right.
That's a thousand ages.
Absolutely. So the fiscal year '23 vocational school budget, and I think that the Town Council needs to remember that, while the Northeast Regional Metropolitan Vocational School will talk about their budgets, we do have some children that go to other schools, other vocational schools. So when you do make the motion, we'd be looking for $2,163,315. And of that is included in the vocational school up at the hill, we'll talk about that. We are not having any children this year at the Minuteman Regional School because the only one that we had last year graduated, so we don't know of any others. At the Essex North Shore School, we will have some children as we had eight students in there last year, one graduated. So we budgeted for seven students for fiscal year '23. Only seven students were budgeted in fiscal year '22 and eight attended. So we really never know until we get the bill in October on these other schools. So I think that it really is a great budget and I know the vote will go through theirs, but I did want to let you know that when I do ask for the motion, it'll be a little different than what the Northeast will do.
Okay. Counselor, please.
Can I, just to ask a question through you, Madam Chair, before we get to the Northeast section of it? The transportation cost reduction, is that related to...
That is related to, I can always count on you, Jonathan. That is, that is related to Minuteman. So if we don't have anybody going, we don't have the transportation.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay. Welcome. If you could just introduce yourself and share the Northeast Vocational School budget.
I'll go, well, Jase, coming on. I'm Carlos Guzzarella, I'm the principal deputy director of... I'm the principal deputy director of the Hill at the VOK School, and this is our director of finance, Jay Pecone. And as usual, he'll be providing you with the budget information.
Thank you.
Excellent. Is Brittany Caricella available? Is she on? She's our representative from Wakefield.
Yep, I just see Brittany.
All right. I didn't know if she wanted to say a few words before I started, or?
Yeah, she is.
Okay.
We may not be able to see everybody who's on screen, so Sheri, if-
Right.
Okay.
So if she's on, she can proceed, or we can wait?
She is on, yeah.
Okay, yes, please proceed.
Hi, Brittany.
Hi, everyone. Hi, sorry about that.
All right. Did you want me to proceed, Brittany, or did you want to say a few words?
That'd be great.
All right. Sheri, is there any way I could share my screen?
You should be able to, Jay, yeah.
Excellent, all right. Okay. Great. Everybody can see that, correct?
Yes.
All right, excellent. All right, so thank you very much, everyone, for having us tonight. This is the presentation of the FY '23 budget for Northeast Metro Tech. And, okay. With all of our FY '23 budget, and really the goal of all of our budgets that we set out to produce on an annual basis is, we always have two goals in mind. First and foremost, we always want to minimize financial impact to our member communities. You know, we understand that our member communities have certain financial constraints. They're under the prefaces of Prop 2.5, or how much money they can raise via taxation on an annual basis. We also understand that there's other departments you need to fund fully and adequately, and we don't want to hamper the district with a large assessment increase. You know, because we understand that Wakefield is a partner with us in this endeavor, and we don't want to financially burden them. And secondly, we want to provide an adequate level of funding to support student learning and foster educational excellence, because ultimately, that's what we're here to do. We're here to be Wakefield's other school. We want the community of Wakefield to be proud to send their kids to Northeast, even though we're right up the hill from you guys. But we really do consider ourselves the other school. We want to be as excellent as Wakefield Public Schools, except in a vocational pathway, and we really take that to heart. And thirdly, there's a third goal in this budget. We want to allocate the additional funds that were provided for by the Student Opportunity Act to best meet student needs. So regionalization exists by definition to offer services at a reduced cost to its member communities. So our initial budget goal, every single year, we set out to produce is, we want to keep it at a below a 3% increase, which would be $463,977 or less. I will say that we were able to accomplish that this year. This year's a little bit different, because this is the first year that we have our debt service payment, the principal and interest for the first year of the bonding for our school building projects, which thankfully, and thanks in a large part to Wakefield due to your support, it passed with 83% of the vote, of the popular vote. So the school building project moves onward and upward. But the actual operation assessment increase before the debt assessment is 136,448, and equates to about a 0.88% increase of assessment. So the next slide shows a historical assessment analysis. Shows in FY '21, we went up 288,463. FY '22, we went up 450,186. In FY '23, we went up 136,448. Again, this is before the debt service payment. The debt service payment obviously inflates that number, but it's a required increase. We've been talking about it for six years, and, you know, this was a known cost that was coming. So I think we did a pretty good job informing the communities over the years that this was, that this was coming. And over the year, we actually solidified the numbers, so therefore, we came in pretty close to the estimate. The only thing that would be different was the October 1 numbers that we had to adjust the assessments for. And this is a numerical representation of that same data. You can see that we went up 0.88% in FY '23. So the real reason why we were able to minimize this member community assessment is because we got a big influx of Chapter 70 money due to the Student Opportunity Act. Initially, it was supposed to be rolled out in FY '21. However, that was pre-COVID, and then when revenues dried up, and that was not possible. So they actually revised the Chapter 70 numbers FY '21, and we had to actually cut the budget by $780,000 mid-year, but we were able to, we were able to do that with some creative financing. In FY '22, we got a little bit of a bump of Chapter 70, but in FY '23, we really see an increase of what they promised, right sizing the Chapter 70 formula to where it really should be. This is a seven-year program that they're going to roll this out in. So this is, if this is a sign of what's to come, it's a good sign. So as I mentioned, we received the $12,768,498 in aid in FY '23, and why that's significant is, it's $1,573,385 higher than our budget at aid in FY '22, and we use all of that to offset the member communities' assessments. We intend to receive a projected $1 million of transportation revenue that we're going to receive in FY '22, which we're receiving right now. We're going to bank those receipts and use that to offset the FY '23 budget. And additionally, we're going to use $2,279,950 from our E and D, our excess and deficiency funds, to further reduce the assessment costs. In total, we plan to use $3,279,950 of other funds to reduce the number of assessments. So FY '23 has following fiscal challenges, like any other year. We need funding for regular contractual salary obligations, including steps in lanes, funding for new educators based on student needs and increased enrollment in key subjects, funding for our OPEB liability, which is around $60 million liability for anybody who doesn't know what OPEB is, I'm sure you do, but as other post-employment benefits, it's a future liability of all of our, if everybody was to retire all at once, that would be the future cost of all benefits related to those retirees. Funding increases for health insurance costs due to a projected 6.3% increase in GIC premiums, and funding to tackle overcrowding in this kind of school building due to increased enrollments. And by that, we are looking to get another modular classroom, because we're exploding right now. I mean, our enrollment is far exceeding our capacity. So in total, Northeast, our total operating expense before debt service is projected to be $31,658,000, which is 5.99%, or $1,789,784 over FY '22's operating budget. As I mentioned, we're using a lot of reserves and increased revenues to offset that $1,789. We offset that by an additional $1,653, and that brings us to 1, I can't really see past this little box, 136,448, is the total assessment increase before debt service. So after the application of debt service of $1,862,200, the total assessment increase for all communities going up 12.123%. I'm sorry, I take that back. That's what the operating budget costs going up. The total, the assessment, resulting assessment is 12.92%, because the 136,448, we have to add the $1,862,200 onto it. As I mentioned, we've been talking about this, and a lot of communities have been planning, I know Wakefield's been planning for this a number of years, so this is the resulting assessment increase. And in Wakefield, you'll see that you went up six students. Based on that, plus the capital assessment, the increase is 284,836. The total assessment is $2,001,07068. And that is, that is it. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from the councilors? Counselor Chines?
Thank you, and thank you, Jay, for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. In terms of the use of the 2.3 million from excess and deficiency funds, could you speak a little bit to sort of, you know, the state of your E and D funds and what's sort of left after that allocation?
Sure, yeah. So we anticipated that we were going to, in FY '21, that's where the E and D funds are derived. We had some savings left over, so we actually made a plan to build up our E and D funds in order to, because we wanted to pass along that savings to the member communities. For instance, we had savings in transportation. We had savings in other areas that we didn't fully expect, and we said, you know, we're going to build up our E and D, be able to use that, that total increase to really significantly impact the member community assessments, because we thought that would be the most fiscally responsible thing to do. In terms of our E and D, we're fully, will be fully at the 5% of allowable carryover in terms of the balances.
Okay, after the 2.3 million that-
Yes.
Great, okay. And just a second question. Can you remind us, and I'm sure we went through this when we talked about the facility project, the debt service of 1.8 million, I'm assuming that increases in fiscal '24 as the building kind of comes online and construction's underway?
In fiscal '24, it's pretty similar, and it's not until fiscal '25 is when it starts to creep up.
Okay, and can you remind us roughly what you were expecting in '25 and after? If you know off the top of your head.
Twenty-five? What? I don't have it right in front of me, but I can certainly get you that information.
No worries. I could, I'm sure I could go back and figure it out as well, but-
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to send it to the committee. That's fine. I can send you the entire exhibit that we have that actually has been updated with all of the new October 1 numbers, so it would be the most reasoned out of-
Great, thank you very much.
I'd be happy to shoot them. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the councilors? Steve, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I wanted to maybe jump on what Jonathan was saying, that when we have our forecast going forward, we're anticipating, you know, a little bit of an increase in '24, a little bit in '25. '26, we're really seeing the big jump. You know, usually you're paying those in arrears, so we've got that all in on forwards.
So can I ask a question? Because the school, we know it's been approved, which is great, but it's not fully designed yet, so we don't really have the, I mean, do we have a fixed cost? Because my understanding is there's still a lot of design considerations to be considered.
Yeah, our budget has been locked in, so we can't, we can only spend 317 million is the total amount that we can spend. It can't go-
So you're designing within that, within that box, within that number?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And that does include some contingencies, too, so there's, some of that is built into the 317 million.
Okay.
And that's locked in with SBA.
That's right, I know that's locked in with SBA. Counselor Dobroski?
Actually, I had a chance this weekend to speak to a mom of a current student, and she was glowing about the school. She was talking about the various disciplines that he has now been exploring before you narrowed down what it is you want to go forward in, and he has been doing so incredibly well. And she was just glowing, because you can tell, she felt like he had a great future ahead of him. And he does, and I think any student that goes to this school has a great future ahead of them. So I'm in full support of looking at ways that we can really, you know, take advantage of this great asset that we have, it happens to be in our town, but a great asset for our students. And, you know, this idea of thinking about individualized learning, and what makes sense for each student, and playing upon their strengths, and making sure we're promoting them, so it's not just like a shuffling through, but instead, you know, how can we individualize each educational experience, you know, to help everyone realize their potential? And, I mean, she was almost brought to tears when she was speaking so pridefully about, you know, all that her son was doing. So I would just say, just please continue to do what you're doing, because programmatically, it's making an impact on a lot of kids' lives.
Thank you, that's nice to hear.
That explains your large enrollment, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
And growing enrollment. Okay, so we have a motion for, we need a motion for $2,163,315 for the vocational budget, which includes Northeast Regional as well as Minuteman and Essex, and transportation costs.
So moved.
Second. It's moved by Counselor Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the vocational school budget? All opposed? So seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks very much.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you very much for having us.
All right.
Okay, so we do not have to vote on the Wakefield budget. Do you want to do an overview?
No, I think that you can just go right to the superintendent, who I think they'll be bringing up.
Okay, so they're bringing-
Yep, flag should be coming up.
Line is coming up.
Madam Chair, while we're waiting, do you want to go back to public engagement at some point?
Well, did Mr. Conley show up, Sheri, for public engagement?
Yes.
We can, we can take, I think we can take him, use Sheri prerogative. Dog, we're just going to put you on hold for a couple more minutes.
No more than three minutes.
Three minutes, three minutes max. You're welcome to stay on camera. Thank you, Counselor Chines.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, this is Bill.
Hi, Bill, how are you? If you just want to introduce yourself, and we'll give you three minutes to share your thoughts.
Yes, and I'll explain my lateness a bit. But we'll move quickly on. Bill Conley, 83 Elm Street, board member of the Friends of Lake Quanapawat. Thank you very much for your consideration, letting me in. I did get here a little late. I'm in Denver, and I don't know if it's the time or the elevation, but something happened, so that's my excuse. Very gracious of you to let me in. I would like to say that I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of Lake Quanapawat and our president, Margaret Copay. She has a letter en route to the town council, the subject being the structured policy for the lake. I know that's coming up on the agenda tonight. And I'd like to, if I could, just read a bit of it. I won't read the whole letter, but I think it'll get what we are thinking relative to this particular request. So bear with me, I'll bring up, I think I will bring up, if I can shrink my screen. Yeah, so this is the letter from Margaret. I'll just read it, I won't share it at a time, but it is addressed to the town council, dated today, and it's under her signature, and she says, "Dear members of the town council, the board of directors of the Friends of Lake Quanapawat urges the town council to adhere to its policy titled, 'Structures placed adjacent to Lake Quanapawat in Veterans Memorial Park and Public Playgrounds, Not Schools, and to deny the requests of Sentinel Benefits and Financial Group located at 100 Quanapawat Parkway to erect a little library kiosk as a memorial to a deceased employee on public land. While coming from absolutely worthy sentiments, as we all understand, it is an example of why the policy was put in place. Fellow FOLQ has learned through its own experience that immense demand for memorials around the lake threaten the integrity of the limited square footage of grassy area around the lake. Every new memorial is an invitation for more. It will never end, and the memorials once installed are extremely difficult." And the memorials once installed are extremely difficult to remove." The relevant section is of the policy, which FOLQ participated in the forming of it and were very pleased about it, to give the town council something to work with, recognizing, I think, in general, that there were limits necessary. She goes on to say that requests of this nature are to be accompanied by a written plan, written notice to the town administrator's office of plans and specifications, exactly what's going on. And the, the policy calls for, you know, clear opportunity for the public to be involved in this. So, it's very, very positive. We just feel unequivocally that requests of this nature are to be excluded, citing the policy, are in the best interest of the public use of public land and not ceding something in the way of an ability to add structure or mend a structure to private commercial businesses. So, that's the thoughts of the Friends of Lake Quanapowhatl.
Thank, thank you.
Counselors, thank you. You can expect a letter from Margaret to the effect. I don't want to take up too, too much time, but we are very committed to looking at this. And hopefully, the request will not, not be honored in, in any way.
Thank you very...
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conley. We will, we will look for that, and we're going to be discussing that later in the, in the meeting today. Thank you, and to the FOLQ for your...
And Sherry for spotting me out here.
And for Jonathan for alerting me that you were there. Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Have fun in Denver.
Yes, we will. Bye-bye.
Okay, Mr. Lyons, the floor is yours. Introduce yourselves and...
Thank you very much.
Walk us through this.
Sure. Thank you very much for having us this evening. Ryan, can you put up a slide deck? Thank you so much. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So, this is an abbreviated deck. This is reduced by about two-thirds, just to try to be concise and give you a, a quick overview of our budget. Next slide, please, Ryan. The goal for this evening is to just share budget priorities that align with our district and instructional strategy, give you a snapshot of how we have surveyed and included the community to help us prioritize budget resources and to explain budget priorities and how that correlates to the proposed increases that we made to school committee that was accepted last week. There'll be time at the end also for, of course, question, questions and answers. Next slide, please, Ryan. So, the, the budget priorities for the FY '23 budget is, there are many. We're looking at really trying to, you know, get the Wakefield Public Schools back on track and get us focused, you know, back on, on kind of a focus on academic teaching and learning, social emotional support for students. But we're also looking at the gaps that have been caused due to the pandemic. We're looking for opportunities to accelerate students that are prepared to be accelerated at elementary, middle, and high school. We're looking at kind of the social emotional needs and the counseling needs of students. I'm sure you've all seen in the media how difficult it is to, to get a clinician, find a clinician. And so, we are, last year, we had two grant-funded adjustment counselors. And we're seeking to move those from a grant-funded positions to the regular budget. And so, we're also looking at two additional science teachers that were contractual commitments that we made three years ago when we settled the teacher contract. And we delayed the hiring of those positions due to COVID. We're also looking at special education needs and programs for improved transition services and as well as additional staffing in that area. Next slide, please, Ryan. So, at the high school, we're looking, this has been something that has been a priority for us for a few years now, but due to COVID, it has been kind of flat. And so, we are looking at getting back on track to provide dual enrollment opportunities and student internships. And so, dual enrollment really has kind of two parts to it. One is really focusing on first-generation college applicants. The other is providing college experiences for students at the high school level. So, that's something that we're going to be focusing on this coming year, as well as student internships. The more we feel like we can get students in positions in areas of high interest that they're interested in learning about and possibly going into, and through their major in college and, and then maybe work after, the more they can really be thoughtful about the courses and majors that they're taking. A big, a big issue for us is, and it is with all school districts and municipalities, is just this notion of recruiting and retaining teachers, administrators, as well as para-educators during this time. And so, you know, it's a difficult time to, to find and hire exceptional people. You know, the, the human resource market has been affected by COVID in dramatic ways. And not only in predictable sectors like technology and other areas, but also on the school side as well. Excuse me. An additional priority for us is to retain through grant funding the two custodians that we took on this past year, which were grant-funded, and our two float nurses. We, we believe that we are going to continue to have health needs, that we're going to need our nurses. And we've also made commitments in regard to maintenance and facilities work these two custodians will help us with this coming year. And so, which brings me to my next bullet, which is to continue to, to work collaboratively with DPW on the preventative maintenance and improvements that we've made to facilities. You know, we've invested quite a bit of money in a short amount of time due to COVID in our HVAC systems and facilities. And to keep up what we have kind of put into those systems is going to take time and effort. And we're really fortunate to have the relationship that we do have with DPW. And, and we're looking that, we're thinking that we will be able to do that in a very positive way. And so, the last bullet is just a, a reminder that the Wakefield Public Schools, I know we have the largest budget in town. We're reminded frequently. And, but we also want to be clear that it, it is a budget that funds a faculty and staff of 594 students in seven bargaining units, serving close to 3,400 students and families in, in pre-K through post, right? That's students up to age 22. Next slide, please. Christine?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. This slide just highlights the change from fiscal '22 to '23, and it's broken down by the three categories. These three categories, we report monthly to school committee. It's personnel, all staff on the payroll of Wakefield Public Schools. And then contractual services, things like busing, services to students, out-of-district placements, and again, materials and supplies. So, it shows our, our three big buckets of, of spending. And of course, our largest bucket is personnel. But from '22 to '23, our increase for '23 is 4.99% over '22. For $47,607,077. Next slide, please. So, basically, we also wanted to address what the COVID-related costs that we're still paying for in '22. We're still paying for the two additional adjustment counselors to help our students adjust back to, to in-person learning. It's been a long two years, and some of our students, this is really their first year back in, in-person learning full-time. We're doing additional testing and assessment services for those students to really find out where they're, where they're at and what services they might require. We've hired this year four COVID-teaching positions. While we were in quarantines and we were having our spikes, we had COVID teachers who were supporting our students who were in quarantine. We are currently still have the two additional custodians and the two additional float nurses that move from school to school. They have been such value-added to our families. And then we provided testing clinics for our staff. When we were in the height of, when we were seeing the surge in, in town, we, we provided, along with the town, some testing clinics to the tune of $35,000. So, to date, we've spent almost $700,000 in COVID-related costs in fiscal '22. We were lucky to offset most, well, half of it with ESER 2 funds. And we're anticipating some funds this year from the town for about $360,000. Next slide. So, we know we're still going to have some COVID-related costs in fiscal '23. Two float nurses are supporting, we're doing at-home testing with our families and staff. They test at home and let us know if there's any positive tests. But they report to those nurses who can also communicate to the schools and to our faculty. We have two custodians. We've done such incredible improvements to our facilities over the past two years in conjunction with DPW and the town, but it, that, those improvements come at a cost. We have filter changes that happen quite often during the year. We have storage facilities that are still having to be unpacked and sorted through for some of our furniture when we had to socially distance in the classrooms. So, all of these costs for next year are still looking at $323,000. And we're hoping to offset that with the ARPA money coming from the town for next year. Next slide. So, we have one more ESER 3 from the state that's coming, and we are able to spend that over '23 and '24. So, we, we made a conscious decision when we did our survey to the community about what we were going to put on that grant. We heard very loud and clear from our families. They wanted individualized instruction for students, after-school and summer tutoring. We need to provide mental health services and supports for our families and our students. And we still need to maintain improvements in air quality in our school facilities. So, what we've done is we've, we've targeted these four areas in our ESER 3, but we're going to spend it thoughtfully over '23 and '24. So, we're not going to spend it all in '23 and have a funding cliff in '24. We're being really thoughtful about that. Next slide. Now, we talked about, Doug and I, when we were talking to school committee, there are things when we're putting this budget together, we've been working on this budget since November. And there are things that we've known, and there's still things we don't know. But we know that we heard from, we had staff forums with all of our teachers, all of our principals, all of our administrators, heard that direct instruction and intervention and counseling are the top priorities for next year. We heard particularly the elementary, that extended day for intervention services were going to be important next year. And our technology supports are critical to maintain the investments that we made in all of our devices for our students. We also made an investment in a new student management system for next year. It's Power School. IPASS, our current system, really has helped, you know, it, it's not really supporting our needs. So, we made an investment for Power School. What we do know, we just heard, that meals will no longer be free to all of our students next year, which I know is really disappointing for some of our families. But we still have some unknowns. As Doug just mentioned, human resources is really a challenge. Filling some of our paraprofessional roles, crossing guards, some of our teacher roles, we are really seeing shortages in people working in the educational field. So, that's sort of a struggle that some of our principals are really, we're trying to target now for next year. For food services, we're really seeing some supply chain issues for goods and services. Those are affecting our, our meal costs. And we've talked about the Special Education Stabilization Fund, which we know we had to access once during COVID. Right now, we don't anticipate having to go to the, the stabilization fund again. But, you know, out-of-district cost is something that we're always keeping an eye on. I don't know, Doug, if you wanted to weigh in?
Yeah. I, I think it's important for the, the council to hear that, that we're paying very close attention to the economy and what's happening around the United States, but also around the world. You know, we, we, we are affected by, you know, supply chain issues. We are affected by personnel. We used to post positions and get quite a few applicants. And we're, we're seeing applicant pools really kind of drying up for certain positions that are really requiring us to be creative and thoughtful about, you know, how we're developing talent from within. And so, you know, if, if, if not Plan A, then what's Plan B? So, we're not deterred at, at really trying to continue to improve the school system. We're really just want to acknowledge that these things that are difficult across the state and for all school districts and all municipalities are things that we are, that we are working through as well. And so, I, I can take the next slide as well. Next slide, please, Ryan. So, you know, Christine mentioned ESER. So, we, between our ESER survey and our annual budget survey that we, that we administered this year, we had close to 1,400 replies. And so, the personnel that, that had access to that survey were students, parents, teachers, faculty, and staff. And so, that's very important in helping us to prioritize our resources. And so, this is just one snapshot. We had probably 15 slides capturing our survey information. But I, I just wanted to include one slide this evening so that you could see. So, you'll see in the first row, those are the top priorities in the first row, going horizontally from left to right. But I also listed kind of our second-tier priorities because we want to continue to keep an eye on those and, and just be thoughtful about how we're planning, not just for this budget, not just for FY '23, but for FY '24, '25, and '26 as well. You know, Christine mentioned, you know, negotiating a funding cliff. We're really trying to be thoughtful about how we're creating a bridge with our grant money so that if we need something, even personnel over time, that we're moving it from the grant-funded position to our regular budget. And we're trying to do that incrementally so it doesn't create this kind of big spike in, in our, in our budgeting. But I just wanted to mention that. I think it's important to know. Next slide, please. So, you've heard us say this. So, the priorities for us in regard to, to, in our, in our proposal, what we made to school committee, we have two additional science specialists at the elementary level. You know, there's no mystery here, right? If we want to have exceptional science programs at middle and high school, we need to start early. Our science programming at elementary was, was good, but not as good as it could have been. We worked collaboratively with the teachers and agreed in our last round of negotiations that we would hire science specialists to support the teaching of science at the elementary level in grades K through 4. We agreed that we would do this over a two-year period, funding two positions in one year and two positions in the following year. We delayed that due to COVID, but now we're in kind of year, year two or year three, which should have been year two. We're looking to fund two positions in science. We're also looking to move from a grant funding to the regular budget, the two adjustment counselors that we hired last year. We hired one at the middle school and one at the high school. And they have certainly really been game changers for us in those spaces in regard to their ability to support students and families during this period. We're looking at one additional paraprofessional at Doyle for a new student that's coming in who needs specific support. And we're looking at four special education positions district-wide in the, in response to program shifts as students are moving from elementary to middle. And also, we need additional support really at, at pre-K, elementary, and middle is where, is where all four of these positions are going. Next slide, please. So, Christine mentioned this. We're looking at, at two custodians to be grant-funded this year, as well as our two float nurses. And so, I feel like we've, we've provided a lot of information there. I think we can move to the next slide. Christine, you want to take this?
Sure. We just thought we'd highlight the, I know the, the vocational school already talked about the Student Opportunity Act, but we, we've seen some increased funding for Chapter 70. Now, we know the governor's budget isn't the final budget. It's the, the first one that comes out. It helps municipalities start budget planning. But for us in Wakefield, you know, we're seeing over a 14% increase in Chapter 70. So, we just wanted this slide to sort of highlight the additional funding that's coming into Wakefield. So, we thought that was good news. Next slide. So, that's really a summary of, we had many more slides for school committee and a budget book that's 64 pages. So, if anyone wants nighttime reading, it's on our website. I can print out a, a book for you as well. But we sort of highlighted everything that we've been talking about, I feel like, Doug, for the past four months. Really stressing that this budget is really thoughtful. It's really inclusive of all our staff, our students, our principals, just our administrators. It's, you know, it's not just Doug and I sitting in a room and, and coming... You know, it's not just Doug and I sitting in a room and coming up with this budget. It's really been, you know, months of planning. But I think we just will pause there for some questions.
Counselor Santos? Not really a question. I just want to thank you for such a thoughtful budget. I've been on the council long enough that I remember way back when the budgets were presented. They weren't presented arrogantly, but the lack of information in the budgets made it really hard to get a grip on what was happening at the schools. And that is absolutely never been the case with you, Doug. So I want to thank you so much for such a detailed budget. And I can, and Christine as well. And I can, you know, your issue with retention and hiring, it's hitting every, it's hitting all kinds of jobs in professions. At the university level where I am, we cannot hire, we cannot retain, we're losing people. We're having such a hard time hiring good people. So I absolutely feel your pain, but appreciate, you know, trying to hire the best we can. So thank you for this budget. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
Counselor Santos?
I want to echo, you know, Counselor Santos's comments. I think this is the sixth public school budget that I've gone through between serving on Finance Committee and Town Council. And I am continually impressed at the job that you do to engage with members of the community. I say that as a parent. I know that engagement also sits with students and faculty. And the fact that you put together a budget that is both responsible in the current year, but also one that looks forward to our needs in future years and one that responds to sort of the hallmark of what we're trying to do as a school system in terms of individualized, student-focused education. So really, once again, just kind of an excellent job with all of this. And appreciate not only you two, but I know there's a lot of work behind the scenes as well and a lot of work on the school committee side to go through it. I just, I had a couple of sort of specific questions that I wanted to talk through. And maybe just the first one, if I could ask, on the two custodians and the two float nurse positions. So it sounds like the expectation is that those would be sort of one-year positions that would sunset for fiscal 2024, obviously assuming that things kind of progress the way we hope they progress in terms of the pandemic. Can you talk about any additional work that those positions have carried on that you would expect to carry forward and how you anticipate that kind of playing out in future years?
Sure. First of all, on the custodians, you know, the kind of, we've created different, not only cleaning schedules, but also maintenance schedules, Jonathan. So, you know, maintenance that we used to do once a year, we're now doing twice a year. So for example, we change filters in HVAC systems, right? Throughout the entire school department, right? And so you're talking hundreds of UNI events that need to be, you know, taken apart, filters changed, put back together. You know, filters are just one example. We've also brought on individual air filtration units, right? We have, I think, almost 1,000 air filtration units that are distributed throughout all of our schools and classrooms, right? Those are units that we brought on because of COVID. And so between preventative maintenance and schedules that have changed, between additional equipment that has been brought in and kind of the changes in the way that we're cleaning, I think that those positions, you know, we have two positions. We probably could use four, but we're really just trying to be thoughtful and make it work the best we can with the personnel that we have. We also, I will say, I can't say enough about DPW and how Joe Conway and his group, Chris Pierce, have been really remarkable in being proactive with all of our systems, you know? You know, we have items listed on Capitol of Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. You know, if something looks like it's going to fail, you know, I think when I first arrived here, I think we would wait, to be honest with you, Jonathan, I think we would wait. Now I feel like, you know, we're far more proactive than we were just a few years ago. So because of all those reasons, for example, so that's custodians and facilities. In regard to our nurses, the level of communication and support that our nurses provide students and families is different now. Their job is different, their communication cycles that they're in. You know, they're working well beyond the school day, you know, answering email from families that just want to check in about, they're continuing to check in about COVID exposures, isolation, quarantine, how do you make it work? You know, should I send my child to school? They are also key players in the testing and management of information for 2,200 people, close to maybe 22 or 2,400 people. What's the number, Christine?
Yeah, it's about 2,400 people who opted in for at-home testing. Plus, the nurses help facilitate. We are distributing tests every other week to family and staff and making sure that they have them. So every Monday, students can test before they come to school, faculty can test, and we can make sure that we are reporting that. And we're making sure that that information gets to DESI. So the amount of work that has really fallen on the nurses has really increased, and they have just been remarkable.
Yeah, our nurses are often the first stop, especially at the elementary level. If students are feeling a little anxious or feeling like they just need to check in, the nurse's office is usually the first stop. So, you know, they're often directing traffic, right? Directing students to our adjustment counselors, directing students to the administration. So they're kind of, they've become key players in the daily operation of our schools.
And we were fortunate. When we posted for these two positions, we didn't know if we would be able to find anyone. We found two qualified registered nurses to fill these roles. So we were so fortunate to find them.
So I hope I answered your question, Jonathan.
Well, you know, and I may not have been as clear with it, but certainly, first of all, I appreciate you recognizing the custodians and the nurses in this. I will tell you again, as a parent, and as a parent who's interacted a lot with particularly Kelly Quailey at the Walton School with my crowd there, you know, the praise of the work that the nurses and the custodians are doing at all levels really is not undeserved. I mean, they've done an amazing job, always, but particularly over the last couple of years and in difficult circumstances. But I guess the question is, as we look at those four positions that we're supporting via ARPA, is the expectation that that work will kind of ease up in fiscal 2024? Or, you know, is there work that then has to be redistributed among other staff? Or is it still an open question as to whether we would need to keep those positions in place?
I think at this point, it's still an open question.
Okay.
You know, I don't think we are ready to say that we need to move those positions to the regular budget. You know, if we do, we'll need to plan accordingly next year. But I think if we can continue to fund them through grant funds while also keeping our operational budget in a reasonable space, I think that's the way for us to go.
Okay, great. No, thank you, appreciate that.
Certainly.
I wanted to turn my attention for a second around literacy coaches. So it looked as I went through the budget and I sat through the school committee meeting and went through the whole budget. So I probably spent more time on this than any reasonable person should. But it did look like we were, there was a removal of positions for literacy coaches at the elementary school. And I'm wondering if you could speak to that. I'm not sure if I was looking at that correctly or, you know, given the moving pieces around special education and so forth, if that's kind of accounted for elsewhere. But could you dig into that a little bit?
I can. Those positions were, we presented to school committee about a year ago. And we presented the kind of the reorganization of kind of the curriculum structure. And so we had four literacy coaches. One of those positions was reconstituted. One was moved into a kind of a reading specialist position because we had needs in that area. And the two remaining coaches have taken on additional duties. One is a humanities coach and the other is a STEM coach. But there's been a reorg, and kind of I can send you that, kind of the distribution of the chart and what that looks like on the curriculum side. But we presented that to school committee a little over a year ago. And so that has really, really helped us quite a bit organize and create considerable more continuity in kind of what's happening classroom to classroom and also school to school, especially at the elementary level. But we're also opening up the lens now. It's not just literacy. We're looking at humanities, English and social studies. And then we're looking at math and kind of the STEM fields being coupled together so that we're coaching instruction across all curricular areas and not just literacy.
But you're right. If you go through the pages, you'll see the Greenwood and the Walton, two big negative balances because those lines, those are moved from those elementary schools. And those two positions that Doug talked about were moved to the district-wide pages.
Okay, great.
So they're not just assigned to those two schools anymore.
Got it, thank you. And then finally, just the last question I had. You also alluded into the presentation for the fact that the federal support for free school lunches is ending. And while I know that the intent behind the school lunch program is that that is self-funding in terms of the cost, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit about that dynamic. I'd imagine there's, it's, I would guess it's not probably quite self-funded, given, you know, given just the challenges of, you know, kind of collecting for lunches and replenishing student accounts and so forth. But curious about your perspective on what that means for you guys going forward.
I could chime in, Doug. So for the past two years, we've been funded by what's called the Seamless Summer Program. Congress was fortunate enough for us to fund it. And what it meant was regardless of your ability to pay, every student in school would receive free lunch. So the National School Lunch Program, I don't know, as a parent, you probably saw the sheet that if you have a qualifying income, that you would qualify for either reduced lunch rates or free lunch. But during COVID, we saw such a need for food and food insecurity, which Danielle Collins, I don't know if you met her, she's our Food Service Director. She feels so passionately about this. So we were funded that all of our meals were free. They reimbursed all of the food costs. And so we were never at the point of service, we weren't checking on who was on what level of free, reduced or full pay. But that is not being funded in this, the package that Congress put together. So it is no longer, it is ending on June 30th. So we, for the past two summers, we were able to also do summer meals. So anyone in the community could come on Wednesdays and we were providing bags of food, fresh produce. And that unfortunately is also ending in June. So we won't be able to do that this summer. But I know our food pantry has also already reached out when they heard this. This was, this information was reached to all school business administrators and superintendents last week. So I know everyone's sort of rallying the troops right now because just because the funding has stopped, the need has not stopped. But I will tell you, our school lunches, our participation rates, because it's free, and Lisa's pizza is fabulous, by the way, our petition, our participation rates doubled. The lines at lunch were the biggest we've seen in years. So we are just worried about what this is going to mean for some of our families for next school year. But that's why it's important. We're already coming up with a plan about how to get the information out to our parents and families this summer and to get those information packets back to us about income brackets. So this is work for us to do, but we're just trying to get this word out.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And again, just really thanks to both of you and all of your team, Doug and the school committee for putting this together. I think it's a really thoughtful, responsible budget. You know, one that addresses a lot of challenges and look forward to supporting it at town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, can I just follow up on the school meal and had a hand raise before? But no, because that what caught my attention too. And I was looking it up because I've gotten a lot of emails about the school lunch. There is a statewide bill to get it continued, what the government isn't doing. And Steve, I'm looking to you. I would love for us to send a letter to our delegation with, you know, some specific statistics with the school committee, just to say that I think this would be great. 20% of families with children struggle with food insecurity. I don't know if the number is higher or the same. That's kind of a national average. You know, Maine and California do this. I just think it's been so successful and really like well-fed, non-hungry children are the best learners. And so I think if we could, I'm sure our delegation is actually in support of this, but I think I would really appreciate, and I'm happy to work with you, just I think to say that we support this, like Congress is kind of failing us, but maybe our state can pick up a little bit of the slack, so.
That would be our only hope, right, would be for the state to fund it.
Yeah.
And I know Maine has done it, so we, Maine has.
Maine and California. Yeah, so two states, two states did it. And I just, I had heard such great things about the program, people participating. And so that struck me out of the whole, the presentation was great. Thank you for all of that. But what struck me is, you know, food insecurity as you talk about supply chain and just the cost of everything going up. If there's anything that we can do to, you know, and take away the stigma too. I know, I feel like my first year, Doug, I wrote you about if we did debt collection because it was a common story and you told me we did not do that in town. And I was very proud that we did not do that. But I think if we can continue, you know, helping everyone in town, I think everyone benefits from it, all students benefit from it. So, but thank you for that.
Thank you for your words.
Hi, it's good to see you. Thank you. I think that this is, when you were going through the budget, I think it's really clear and really thoughtful approach. And I know that the last two years have been extremely difficult. But one thing that I really like is your approach of being kind of thoughtful planning, not just for this year, but thinking about long-term, both from the budget side of things and also curriculum. And looking at, you know, what are we doing in kindergarten and aligning, you know, the vertical curriculum right up the chain. And I think that's really good. And, you know, those changes, they take, you know, those changes can sometimes take years to see in terms of changes over time. But I think that we are on such a steady progression with your leadership. So thank you for that. It's, I think that it's really nice to see so much happening in terms of curriculum. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. As many of us know, this is the largest budget of the entire cycle that we look at.
I'm so surprised you brought that up.
And also keep in mind, also benefits on top of that. So this is not including benefits. So it's a significant discussion to be had. And I appreciate you both for breaking down the amount of detail because it does matter significantly. One question I had about the 700,000, Christine, that you had mentioned in COVID-related costs. And you talked about ESAR two getting, I think it was 360 or thereabouts. What, where is the difference coming from or has the difference come from for that?
So 360 was, I don't, at town meeting last year, our budget was cut by $360,000. So the town was going to reimburse us for COVID-related costs for that 360. So it was the difference between the school appropriated budget and the town appropriated budget was 360. So that's the difference that will be reimbursed by the town.
Okay, that's.
So ESAR two ends in June.
Right.
So ESAR three will go for the next two years.
Right, okay. And then the other question I had related to, I know we've focused and this council has talked a lot about the social, emotional supports within the schools. But in speaking with some educators within town and some parents, something that really struck me was equally important, the concern about the learning supports going forward. And one of the reasons, or one of the hypotheses, if you will, that was offered up was that there had been some significant attendance issues in the schools. And educators especially have found that that has contributed to challenges in trying to keep students up to speed, trying to keep everyone on the same track, if you will, going forward. Can you speak a little bit to that? Do you know how the attendance compares? I understand obviously COVID has thrown things off, but notwithstanding that, my understanding is that a lot of students are not showing up to class as often as they used to.
So our daily attendance rates are getting back to where they were pre-COVID. So I, and I think you're, well, I think you might be referring to two kind of issues at play. One has been a phenomenon that we've seen across the state and across the country where in some districts, where in some districts, especially in the in urban districts, students have pulled out and and during COVID and did not attend school and they had some type of alternative programming, right? And so so there's there's that piece. But but it also has affected districts like Wakefield. So we had up to 400 students that were participating in an all-remote schooling during during COVID, right? And so when that ended at the beginning of this year, we brought those students back. Not all could return. So some students have sought alternative settings. So they didn't return to the Wakefield Public Schools. So some of those students are continuing in homeschool programs, some are continuing in private schools, and some are continuing in charter, charter virtual schools, which is a phenomenon that has kind of arisen during this COVID time, which is particularly interesting to me. It seems particularly difficult in regard to the oversight of our charter virtual, but I'll I'll put that aside. But I I think that our enrollment is getting back to where it was and our daily attendance is getting back to where it was. I don't have specific percentages, but I can provide those for the committee or the council if if you'd like them.
Have any of you been hearing concerns from educators about students not showing up to to class often enough?
So students that are enrolled in the school, there is, we take attendance every day. The administration tracks that attendance. And once a student hits a certain number, it kind of triggers kind of wraparound supports, right? And so are we worried about some students? Yes, always. Are we worried every single year? Yes. But I don't think that this is unique or because of COVID. I think it's, you know, any number of reasons where some young adults, often at the high school level, they sometimes struggle to come to school. And so we are, when when those situations arise, I think our guidance department, our our high school administration, our middle school administrators, as well as our SROs, School Resource Officers, are particularly vigilant about accountability and making sure that students are where they belong. The Mass General Law requires a fixed number of days in school per year. The Mass General Law also requires that children attend school. So because of those two things, I I think we're, we're particularly vigilant in those areas.
And then the the other piece you had mentioned earlier was the student enrollment opportunities. And I feel like that's, you know, this idea of early college, you know, I feel like that's something that we see in other states, it being incredibly successful. I feel like we've only just scratched the surface here in Massachusetts. Can you speak a little bit to that in terms of where we are now and where you see that going over the next few years?
Sure. I love this idea. I think, you know, the notion of early college for the two populations that I mentioned in our slide deck, you know, one, one population of first-time applicants to college, first-generation college applicants. You know, it's particularly important, the success rates of those students in getting into and completing college goes up considerably when they have an opportunity to experience college courses early on. And so, but we also have another kind of subset of that group that are just thriving. And, you know, we should be thinking about what are the possibilities of them taking a college course for credit so that they're leaving high school with a college credit. So in the future, I would love to see students leaving with credits that they could transfer. That would be thrilling to me because often now with our advanced placement courses, and I'm sure Anne could speak to this, but often now, when students graduate from Wakefield Memorial High School and they have a number of advanced placement courses that they have completed, a number of colleges won't accept those classes or won't advance them because it affects their business model.
Yes.
You know, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, AP Calculus was a big deal. Now, most of our, most of our applicants, or it's it's not uncommon to see that at at private colleges. And so, so Anne could probably speak more clearly to this than I am right now, Ed.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, you are.
But that's, in the future, I would love to see that.
And then I guess finally, the, we heard from The Voke, and I think that's just such a great success story. And as they mentioned, they see it as, they they see themselves as one or two schools within Wakefield. Can you talk about what the collaboration has been and where you see that collaboration going? Because I think it's a really important opportunity here.
Yeah, Dave DeBarry is a colleague. I think, you know, our relationship has grown considerably, especially during COVID. But I I feel like experiences for kids to come down the hill or kids to go up the hill are are many. You know, I I think, you know, we offer a culinary course at at Wakefield Memorial High School, one of the few high schools that still has that program, and it's terrific. But to actually, for kids that are interested in in learning more about that, there's no reason why we can't collaborate, for example, in that area. In our TV production space, we have a really unique TV production space with two exceptional, exceptional teachers that really bring students in and put them to work. And students do any number of things, from writing original materials to producing short documentaries and and kind of video clips that that they're putting out on social media and in different platforms. So it's a, it's a particularly innovative space, but there's no reason why we can't be kind of collaborating in that area as well. Those are two that just kind of jump out, but other areas as well, right? And so as we start to, you know, look at building a new high school and look at, for example, a STEM lab and think about engineering challenges of the future, right? There's no reason why we couldn't do a joint, you know, engineered electric car or something to that effect. You know, but, I mean, this is the space that we're moving into, which is, you know, Dave, Dave DeBarry's spot on and his team that that was here tonight, Jay and Carla, they're spot on that the vocational numbers in the next decade are going to be through the roof. And so, you know, we need to kind of look at that and pay attention to it on the public side. And and I think we have a a perfect opportunity to do it.
And I just see us, I mean, we're talking about two brand-new facilities in the years to come and trying to leverage those assets. I mean, hundreds of millions of dollars are being invested in this. So how do we collaborate? How do we, you know, really have this so that we we get the most, you know, opportunity for our students? I think it's so so important. Thank you for answering the questions.
Certainly.
And I just want to say one other thing is that about, you know, when we think about collaboration between the schools and the town is that I really do believe that if we want, we talk about downtown and, you know, revitalization and create an active community of vibrant merchants and stores and all that. I I think the way that you do that is you have a strong school system. That's how you bring people into our community, and that's how you revive a downtown.
I I agree, preaching to the choir, you know, so go the town, so go the schools, right? And so, you know, we want to be major players in that space, you know, and we know that we need to grow incrementally in a footprint that that is, that can be sustainable over time. But, you know, I I'm excited for the future and what what the future holds for Wakefield. I think it's going to be a really great place to live because of the planning that's happening now.
Agreed.
Counselor Queen.
Couple of questions. I was looking at the chart for the personnel component for 22, 23. And are the one through 12 numbers, does that represent years in service?
Yes.
So at least from a teacher standpoint, it kind of looks like we're having pretty good retention. Am I reading that correctly? Because it doesn't look like we have anybody that hasn't been around for a few years.
We have the highest teacher retention rate in the Middlesex League.
Excellent, excellent. And I assume MP 30 is Masters plus 30 credit hours? Is that kind of how the scale goes the other way?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I have to say, having been involved in getting some of the starting teacher numbers collapsed here with the parent group any number of years ago, I'm glad to see what we see here because I think it looks good. I also think, having argued at school committee budgetary meetings for the extra teacher at the Walton or Doyle, I think the class sizes are looking very good and I'm very encouraged by it. And I appreciate everything you guys are doing to to keep those numbers where they should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just add, everything everybody said is is great. Can I ask a fairly, my, a specific question? You know, we, the town passed the bylaw on Styrofoam over a year ago, and we've had lots of time for waivers. And and I, it's not just, I know there's supply issues and I don't think it's a top priority, don't get me wrong. But I do think it's a priority. I do think you need to lead by example. And I think the students that I hear from care about this. And I just wonder whether that was taken into consideration in your budget.
Christine has been working with Danielle on this. And this is, a lot of this has to do with with the ability to get what we need at a, you know, at the cost that we need to get it at, right? And so, do you want to add to this, Christine?
If Danielle was here, she would be like, if I can find it, I will use it.
And she's fabulous, and I know she's been working really hard.
Right. It it's, it's amazing about what you can't, things that we would normally be able to get in bulk. I mean, she, she's part of a collaborative buying unit with other districts. And we're trying to get the best prices. And we understand that this is something that we're moving forward to. But right now, that would even increase our costs more next year. And we're just worried about what next year the meal prices are going to do to some of our families because it it has been free for so long. So it is part of our plan, we are working towards that. But we just want to be thoughtful about hitting everything at once for next year.
Absolutely. So thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was on your radar.
Oh, definitely.
Madam Chair, I have a fourth grader at home who's very into this issue and would be glad that you asked that question.
I I know, it it sounds, everything you're doing, there's just, everything's been so heavy. But I I really believe that the students care about this and that, you know, you probably have the biggest influence on talent on on everybody, so, so thank you for all your efforts. Anybody else have anything else to add?
Can I just ask one other question?
Sure.
And this is a little, not not necessarily budget-related, but I I've heard a rumor, Superintendent Lyons, that we need to soon refer to you as Dr. Lyons, is that correct?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Because you've had nothing else to do.
In his spare time.
Yes, yes, it's true. I'll be graduating in May, fortunately.
Congratulations.
Excellent. Great.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't think we have any action we need to take on this, but we will see you at town meeting and look forward to to supporting you there.
Thank you for the support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number nine, licenses. We have a number of, let's see here, two one-day licenses. The first being for Thomas Markham for a one-day liquor license for a campaign social fundraiser on April 4th at the Americal Civic Center.
So moved, second.
Moved by Counselor Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven to zero, motion passes. Item B, request from the Wakefield-Linfield Chamber of Commerce for a one-day liquor license for a fundraiser on May 26th at the Wakefield Bowladrome, which is very intriguing.
I'm gonna tell you, George Corning will not be there.
The Wakefield Bowladrome is quite the place. Do I have a move?
So moved, second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, motion passes seven to zero. And finally, we have a request from King's Flavor located at 61 New Salem Street for a common vicular, vicular license.
So moved, second.
Moved by Counselor Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any questions on this? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10, so we have two, this is not really review, well, I guess, yeah, some of this is a review of the policy. Is Benny Wheat on, Sherry? From Human Rights? So the first was a request from the Human Rights Committee, and they've been looking at this for a number of months. And I thought it's probably time just to open it up to the, to the council for discussion. Going to have to rely very heavily on Mr. Mullen on this because there are a number of legal issues involved in it. But while we'll wait for Benny Wheat, just for context, we did pass a flag policy back in 2019. And the, and the Human Rights Commission has taken advantage of that at the Americal, particularly for June events, Pride events.
She's on.
She's coming, okay. Hi, Benny.
Yep, she's on.
Hi.
Hi, how are you? Why don't you introduce yourself and if you want to give any comments on what you're thinking on the flag policy?
What's going on with my camera?
You were there.
Yeah, she's there, yeah.
Hi, Benny Wheat. I live at 44 Miriam Street in Wakefield. I'm the chair of the Wakefield Human Rights Commission. I have like a very tiny slide presentation, should I put that up?
You can do that, you can share your screen.
Okay. Let's go back to the beginning. Okay, so the Wakefield Human Rights Commission, I think, collaborated with you all a couple of years ago when the town created the flag policy. And the hope was to be able to raise the Pride flag without opening the town up to other risk of having to raise like hateful flags or things like that. And so that's been a really wonderful thing for the past couple of years, to be able to raise the Pride flag. And then also last year, the Juneteenth flag. But we've sort of received some input from the community around this. So it kind of prompted me to ask for some revisions to the flag policy. So over the past couple of years, but like most notably in my mind, last year, I started getting contacted by folks in town saying, how come Wakefield doesn't raise the Pride flag? And I was like, Wakefield does raise the Pride flag. But this picture of the Americal Civic Center, so the the flag policy right now is tied to the Americal Civic Center and the Americal Civic Center's flag pole, which as you can see in this picture, in June, if you didn't know that flag pole was there, like, if I didn't know it was there, I wouldn't know where to look for it. Like, I wouldn't even know there was a flag pole there because it's unfortunately behind a tree. So I started sort of getting contacted by folks in town and thinking about, like, how can we increase the visibility of the flags that we do want to fly to, you know, to message inclusion and belonging? And so there's a couple of issues. One is visibility, like actual, like line of sight, being able to see the flag. The other is what happened last year, which is we now are hoping to fly both the Pride flag and the Juneteenth flag. But both of those events take place in June. And so because the current flag policy only has one flag pole that's named, which is that Civic Center flag pole, what we did was we raised the flag, the Pride flag on June 1st. And then for the weeks surrounding Juneteenth, we took the Pride flag down and put the Juneteenth flag up. And then at the end of that week, we put the Pride flag back up, and it's just kind of a little bit of a jumble. So what we're asking for is two things, two amendments to the flag policy. One is to permit eligible bodies to request that flags be flown on more than one flag pole in the town. So this would, I talked this over with Tom Mullen, which was extremely helpful, thanking Mr. Mullen, about sort of what are the legal protections that are in place? Are there ways we can amend this policy without exposing the town to additional risk? And it sounded to me like it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily open the town to more risk if we were to include additional flag poles in that policy if we retain the sort of like heart of that protection, which is that only town bodies are eligible to request these flags. So in the policy, it says either town bodies like the town council or the Human Rights Commission or any of the commissions or committees, or the other category is not, I can't remember the wording. It's like nonprofits who exist specifically to support a town body. For example, I think basically that means the Friends of the BB is the only nonprofit I can think of that fits that description. So anyway, so this, the amendment that we are asking for would retain that. So only town bodies and the specific, the special kind of nonprofit would be allowed to request that flags be flown, which retains the protection to the town, you know, on the assumption that there aren't any town commissions or like departments or anything that are going to ask us to raise a hateful flag or a flag that does not. pole locations be included in the, in the wording. My hope would be that it would be any flag pole in town could be requested, this is separate from the schools' flag poles, so they, they would retain, you know, control over their own flag poles, but other town-owned flag poles, a body could request to fly a flag on whichever one of those seemed appropriate. Certainly that would always be at the discretion of the Town Council, you know, we would continue to bring a request that could be approved or denied or amended or whatever. Or at the very least, if not all flag poles, the three that strike me as the most visible are the Civic Center, which is already in there, Town Hall and Veterans Field. So those are, those are the thoughts around the location of the actual flag poles. And then another piece that I am interested in requesting a change around is, so in the current policy, it says, you know, a town body that is renting space at the Americal Civic Center for a sanctioned event can request to fly a flag at the Americal Civic Center flag pole. And another change that we're hoping to see is that it not be tied specifically to renting space at the Americal Civic Center. For example, this year, the HRC has been granted a permit to have a Pride concert on the Common in June. So something along those lines, it seems to me, still fits the intention of the policy that the body is having a town sanctioned event on town property that they have like reserved or rented or whatever, and they're requesting to fly a flag in conjunction with that. So those are the two changes that we're hoping to make, the, like diversify the pool of flag poles that are available to us and also diversify the pool of town spaces that are available for, for the kind of, the event that's tied to that flag raising.
Great. Thank you, that was very well presented, very well laid out. Thanks Benny. Mr. Mullen, did you want to add anything or you just want to, we'll discuss and if it comes up?
No, I have no problem with these, these two proposed changes, that is, expanding from the one flag pole location to multiple potential flag pole locations. And, and also moving from the requirement that the organization that makes the request be renting space in a particular building to one that has reserved, whether rent through rental or otherwise, space of any kind, anywhere in the, from the town government. I, I think that's, that's fairly safe.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like we're in any legal, we can discuss this as just a policy. Counselor Chines?
Just a question on that through you, Madam Chair, would that include the schools as sort of any town property or how does that play out just in terms of our authority as the council versus the school committee?
Well, I think the request is limited to town as opposed to school property and I'd prefer to keep it that way because even if we have an argument that the Town Council is in charge of the real estate that the schools occupy, I don't think you want to push the school department around in that particular way, I mean, they have programmatic responsibility for the use of their premises.
So any, Councilor Santos?
I think the changes certainly align with the intent when we first created this flag policy, to protect the town, to make it, so that certain groups would have to jump through a few hoops, we wanted to make sure who was raising the flags. And I don't know that we had thought necessarily, you know, just keeping it on the Civic Center, what you suggested Benny makes perfect sense, that if someone's renting the Town Common, they could use it. These, I think these changes are in alignment with what we thought about and to have a more visible showing of these flags just makes us more inclusive and a more welcoming community. So I'm good.
Agreed. Anyone else? Counselor Dombrowski?
I think we, we just need to be thoughtful about what this, what the implications are and not necessarily about the two flags we've spoken about because, I mean, those are obvious ones. You know, Juneteenth and the Pride flag, understood. I think, right now, I think we have POW MIA flag at Town Hall. I'm concerned about losing that, you know, potentially, you know, for other flags, but I'm also, but I'm more concerned about the idea of what, you know, what kind of parameters we're, we're going to be setting for additional flags beyond what we've talked about. And does that mean that every flag is going to, every request is going to result in three flags, you know, across town? I mean, I don't know, you know, but I think we need to be thinking about that because it's not, not just the Pride flag, not just the Juneteenth flag, but if we start to have more and more groups that are saying, hey, we want to put this one and that one, what is that going to do? You know, is, is that a problem? I don't know. It very well may not be, but I think we need to be thoughtful about that and is it going to be a request of, is it going to be three? You know, so you have three of like-kind flags on all three flag poles, I don't know. Do we say we limit it to two? I don't know if we even make that.
We can say no, I would assume.
We can, but I think the idea of just kind of having like a going policy or understanding of, you know, what our intentions are because to your point, Counselor Santos, I think this does align with our intention of being able to have, you know, flags on, on other poles. I just don't know that it necessarily means that we have three flags of every request across, but how do we kind of, you know, call balls and strikes on that one? I think that's something we need to think about.
Counselor Danny?
Well, maybe we get another flag pole for the occasional flags that are, you know, the Pride flag that will be in June. And then if that becomes an issue, but I don't think that we should, I, I, I don't think that that should be a reason for us not to vote on this and I think you raise good points, but I think we can figure that, I think we can figure that out. Yeah, I think we can figure that out. And I, and I agree with you about, you know, the flags that we have now, you know, displacing one flag for another flag. But I, I just think it's, I think it's a really good sign for our community that shows our, our commitment to inclusivity and we spend a lot of time talking about it, but this is a way to really show it.
I just think, I'm sorry, I just think it's specifically about that POW MIA flag and how that's a very important flag to a lot of people and the idea of displacing that flag, especially given its proximity to the Upper Common and all of the important, you know, remembrances and history there, that, those are the sorts of things I'm thinking about. So these are, I'm talking more unintended consequences.
Sure.
We're, we're doing this with the best of intentions, but I do think we need to be able to be thinking forward about, all right, well, what do we do if we encounter this, you know, certain requests? And it's not HRC-related at all, it's just in general, because this is a broad policy.
Could we get another flag pole? I mean, is that?
Well, I mean, there's a flag, I was looking at this today, trying to think about this as well. So there is a flag pole at the Upper Common that flies both the American flag and the POW MIA. I think it's graded also as flown, you know, much of the year at Town Hall, but I, but I think, you know, taking it down for one or two months before other things seems consistent. And we're not going to touch that Upper Common flag, that should never be touched in my opinion, and I don't think it's part of the proposal that Benny's made. Counselor Chines?
Just through you, maybe to Mr. Mayo, just a question, how many requests have we gotten since this policy went into place in terms of flying flags? I mean, I.
Two.
I was gonna say, and are they both June, are they the Juneteenth and Pride flag?
Both the June.
Okay. So, I mean, and granted, I guess, you know, two of the last three years have been odd because we haven't had many events at the Americal, but it doesn't seem like we've had a huge outcry here.
We had one when we made the policy.
Oh, that we did, that we didn't honor? Oh, I don't remember that one.
So I guess from my perspective, I think in, in light of the fact that, that's been the experience, in light of the fact that, you know, I absolutely agree with Counselor Dombrowski, that, you know, having the POW MIA flag is, is really important and the fact that that is sort of permanently displayed, you know, only 100 yards away from Town Hall on the Common as a, as a place of reverence, I, you know, I think this is something that I'm, I'm comfortable with as well. I think it does hew to the intention of what we had in mind when we came together with the original flag policy.
And we would approve all, we would approve all flags, all applications.
Yeah.
So, and the applications have to be very specific about where they want to be. I mean, I, I guess I agree that, you know, having the same flag on three flag poles probably doesn't make a lot of sense, but that's something we can talk about. And I think, I think HRC really wants one flag, probably one Pride flag to fly somewhere all month and the Juneteenth flag. And Juneteenth is now a state holiday as well, so.
And I was gonna say, and the, the policy still also requires the sponsoring organization to give us the flags too, so if the request is they're going to have three flags, they've got to supply us with three flags, right?
Right. And we can still say no.
And we could still say no.
Yeah, three. Yep, I agree. Motion?
Can I just point out one thing?
Yes.
Madam Chair, just so the, the council is aware, that there are times at Town Hall via a gubernatorial order, we do lower the flag to half mast. So that may occur when another flag is below. And I just, I just say, I don't want anybody to say, why did this happen? Well, it kind of came because of a gubernatorial order.
So if you have to go to half mast, do you have to take down the second flag?
Probably not at Town Hall because I'm not, I don't think it's low enough that it's an issue.
Okay.
Because someone could damage it, you know.
Okay.
But I just want, I don't want this council to get any information back later on, like, why did this happen? Well.
Right.
That's why.
And would that apply as well to the Americal? I mean, if we have.
No, the gubernatorial order only goes to the main administrative.
Only as Town Hall.
Building in town.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's, you know, national, you know, when Colin Powell died, for instance, we were ordered by the governor, when someone has killed a soldier abroad, then that, that comes in from the governor. That's why that's often lowered, just so the council is aware of that.
Okay. So we have a motion to, I guess what we'd have, we'd have to do is to adopt the two changes. Let's see, how are you gonna make this motion?
I don't know, that's what I was.
Can I suggest the motion might be to authorize me to come back with a redrafted policy that incorporates both of the requests?
I like that. So moved. Ding. Okay.
Motion to authorize Tom to come back to us with a redrafted policy based on Benny's recommendations.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
So are we focused then on the three flag poles that we've been talking about, Americal, Vets Field and Town Hall? Is that what we're talking about specifically? So that Mr. Mullen knows that. So I think we should be specific in the policy with that as well.
Oh yeah, absolutely. And what we're not, and what we're not proposing, so the Veterans Memorial Common, the schools.
Sorry, just another question on that. Are there other flag poles in town that potentially would be at play? Just think, trying to remember if there's anything other than kind of the schools and the, and the cemeteries.
Isn't there, isn't there one on Spalding Park?
There are.
So yeah, so tell us where they are.
Upper Common, of course, Town Hall, Vets Field, we talked about, Colonel Conley Park, there's the flag. Senior Center, there's a flag. Patty Heights, there's a flag, which is on Melvin up there. Blatts Field, there's a flag, as we know. Landergan Field, there's a flag. Forest Glade in the veterans section, Police Station, and also the schools. Molten Field, we do have a flag pole, we normally only display that on Memorial Day and 9/11. And JJ Round, there's a flag pole that's seldom used. So there are quite a few.
That complicates it.
So it does complicate things a lot. I guess if, if I could suggest, I think there are a couple of other locations where I, I don't think we would want to allow for the display of flags, certainly Forest Glade would be one of them. You know, I wonder if Patty Heights, just given that that is sort of a memorial location, would be another one. There may be others that you mentioned Steve that I've now forgotten, but.
Only if you start with the three that were mentioned.
Let's start with those.
That's what she had put in there, so.
For, for purposes of a policy, I was anticipating just speaking generically about town-owned flag poles and in response to any given request, you can decide which flag poles you want to fly which flags from.
Yeah.
So the other thing that I like about that is I could see a scenario, maybe there's a display you want to put at the senior center, you know, if there's an event going on there, but.
Or at the police station.
Or at the police station, exactly.
Yeah, so let's make it as generic as possible. Okay, so I don't think that that changes the motion.
Nope.
Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor of motion? Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. So, thank you.
Thanks Benny.
Really great.
So I have a question, should I come back? Because I had also submitted the proposal, but it's like contingent on the policy, so should I resubmit the proposal once this has been approved?
Why did you do that? I think we can be ready to vote on this at our next meeting, which is what, like April 11th?
11th.
And then that should give you time, right, to, you can come back even that day if you want, or the 25th, and it should give you time to, to get everything set up for June.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your work. Okay. Okay, so our next policy is the Bench in Lake structure policy and a request for memorial remembrance. I'm going to turn this right over to Steve because.
Yes.
The way we wrote this policy first comes to him and then the grievance.
Right.
Grievances come to us.
Well, it's, it's, it's more of a, this is not a, not a flag, it's not a, it's not a bench. We spent a lot of time talking about benches, Counselor Butt and I, including inventorying them at like, at seven degrees one morning.
Yeah, I think that was 2019, I thought it was before that.
I was actually 2017, I think, when we did. No, it was 2019, I'm sorry.
Was it really?
Yeah, it was 2019.
Yeah, because I was a year in 17.
I thought it was early.
So this is a request to create a remembrance, a memorial remembrance, which is basically a, kind of a small library, I guess, a little library, kiosk. Is, is anybody on, Sherri, from the?
Yeah, Michael Newhall is on.
Michael Newhall may, may want to come on. Per the policy, it seems to me that the, that the council should have a 30-day comment section. So we put in there for any other items other than memorial benches, which were prohibited, there should be a 30-day, you know, public comment section. We already heard one this evening and I guess we're getting a letter on that to go forward. I think it would behoove the council to wait the 30 days because I think you should hear from all parties and perhaps Mr. Newhall wants to say a few words where he is the petitioner, but that's up to you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, so please, Mr. Newhall, welcome.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all tonight. I, I've had some, some great experience. You know, Sherri, would it be okay if I shared the slides that I have as well?
Julie would do.
Yes, that's fine. Go ahead and share your screen.
Okay.
And we also, I believe, have them in the packet too for the public.
Okay. Let me just. Not, oh, here we go. Thank you. Okay, I hope that's visible?
Yes.
So we, we've, so Sentinel's had some experience working with the town and has really enjoyed the partnership that we had when we worked way back in 2017. It's hard to believe it's five years already, but, but Steve and Richard Stinson, who at the time was the Public Works Director, were very helpful in this process and I think that one of the things that we really intended to do at that time and intend to do at this time was to sort of partner with the town and looking at how we can enhance spaces, in this case, the space that was out our front door, out our driveway there. And we're, we're quite proud, I, I have an intern that's working with me, a high school intern, and had him put a little PowerPoint together here, but I wanted to show, you know, the bench was installed in partnership with the town, the bench looks virtually the same as it did five years ago. And that was very intentional. We wanted to make sure that when we did this, we, we did this with that in mind, that this was not going to deteriorate, this would be maintained well, and we as a, as a company are very proud of maintaining that space. I'm sure that many of you who walk the lake see the space, we try to keep plantings there in the spring and the summertime, maintain that area and keep it looking nice. So, that all said, you know, previous to, previous to this, we had an area there that really just wasn't something that was, was accepting of, you know, people hanging around by the side of the shore there, there was deterioration in the shoreline. people hanging around by the side of the shore there, there was deterioration in the shoreline. We helped the town with, with putting some of the, so wall there, some space that helped the shoreline from continuing to deteriorate. And we take a lot of pride in seeing people sitting on the bench and using that area in a safe manner now. And I think that by saying all of that, what I want to say is that, that's where this idea came from with this little free library. We see so many people sitting on the bench and enjoying the space. Another enhancement to the area was something that our group was proposing. And, you know, this individual who's with our company for over 25 years certainly was a motivation behind choosing this enhancement, this little library, given that literacy was a very big part of her charitable life as well. So that's where we came up with the idea of the little library. Sherri's been helpful in letting me, you know, recognize the policy that's in place here. And I guess what our intent ultimately is to look at the space that is in existence with the existing bench and asking the town to look at the policy to see if there might be a possibility to enhance, enhance that specific space by adding a small library structure there that would either be, you know, somewhere between 36 and 40 inches high in the flower bed, you know, as a piece of the bench area there.
Great.
Okay, so there's, there's various views of how these can look, but in a sense, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen now, but, anybody can do that? Sorry about that, thanks.
Oh, okay, so--
So that's what we're hoping for your consideration.
Great, thank you. So Steve, it sounds like we would then open this up for 30 days and probably come back at our--
It's, it's 30 days or two meetings.
Or two meetings, I remember when we did the policies, so--
April 25th.
So April 25th, okay.
And we'll have Jen put that out on the website, so we can have--
So, yeah, so we'll solicit feedback and we'll make the decision on April 25th.
How helpful is it for people to see that there are various ways of installing and various types of bookcase structures that could work better or potentially not as, as well in that space?
I think any feedback provided would be, would be welcomed. So I think that would be helpful.
Just, you know, what you're imagining. I think that'd be great.
We're, you know, we're feeling this out as well, and I think that in the end, we would wanna do what, whatever would work best for the town, the space. And I recognize that there was a comment earlier that this falls under the structure policy or under the memorial policy. But, you know, this could be potentially a removable bookcase, or there could be a two-season bookcase. There are various ways that this could be done.
Yeah, I think anything that you wanna share like that would be helpful.
Okay.
I would be remiss if I did not say a quick hello to Counselor McLean, who I have experienced with in my past life as a school administrator. So, nice to see you again, Michael.
Good to see you, Mike. I hope the family's well.
All, all good here. It was fun to listen to all that presentation, for sure.
Counselor Chines, you had a, you had a question?
Some memories.
Just a question, Madam Chair, maybe through you to Mr. Mullin, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayo. So in that area, it seems like we still have a few kind of picnic tables and things that are there. Do we know, are those town picnic tables?
They're not town picnic tables. They are not owned by the town, no.
Do we know, I, I don't know--
I have an idea, I'm not really sure. I think they're, the businesses in the area may belong to the school. They, you know, I talked to Dennis Fazio about them, they, people maintain around them that own them, and they seem to be okay right now. So people seem to enjoy them, so.
I guess, it's something that I, I mean, just because it's, I mean, we are looking at sort of structures that have been put, been put on the shoreline without going through us, that, that does concern me. And I, I guess it would be helpful just to know--
I can check into that, yep.
how they got there, who put them there, and--
I'll try to find that out.
If they would like to maintain them there. I mean, I'd like that to come back to this council for discussion.
We also have a new fence that was put up by the town that probably should've come to us as well. So, have a look at that. Councilor--
I'm also, just because it's, it's a part of this presentation, I recall the bench coming before us, I guess in 2017. I don't recall anything beyond that. And I know that between the bench, there's, there's bench on, on a concrete slab. But then there's this, there's this, like, several feet of pavers heading towards the water. And I don't recall that ever being a part of what our approval process was. And it's, there's now plantings and there's a number of other elements to it. I, I understood us to be approving the bench on that, on the, on that concrete footing, and that was the extent of it. So I don't know, perhaps we could just, Madam Clerk, if you could just, perhaps pull that from 2017 and let us know what exactly had been approved. Because I, I don't recall there being, you know, as much as there ended up being. And I do think, if you look at it visually, it takes up a good amount of the, that footage, that frontage right in front of the lake there.
Good, so we can, we can look at all these things as well and bring it back on the 25th. Okay? So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, item 11, outdoor dining.
Item 11, okay. As the, as the council knows, over the last, I guess, two years, we have enjoyed outdoor usage of property. And I say outdoor use, public way usage, not just restaurants, because some of the businesses have also come out and done a nice job. So, thought I would bring this up, kind of get ahead of the curve, because we are getting inquiries from a lot of the businesses that would like to continue to come out into the, into the street if they can. So where we are right now with the state is both chambers have passed a supplemental budget. Both chambers included the extension of outdoor dining through April 1st, among, uh, 2023, among some other things. Current provisions expire April 1st, 2022. And Conference Committee will meet and hopefully send the bill to the governor for signature this week. That's what I was told by our, our state delegation last Thursday night. But we'll see what happens. At this point, we don't have anything. So again, trying to get a little bit ahead of the curve on this. So outdoor means outdoor. It doesn't mean half in, half out on the sidewalk. It means outdoor. This is kind of the past things that we've looked at. No bars, okay? Umbrellas only, no tents. We talked about that after the first year. Tents seem to be unsightly and not safe, and umbrellas, I think, add more of an ambiance. Zoning relief is not necessary because of legislation. And the local authority on liquor license, local authority on liquor license alterations, as the council knows, when you alter your business and you alter your liquor license, it actually has to go into the ABCC. It's a much longer process. This kind of legislation has negated this, you know, because of what happened during COVID. But I think we have to think about post-COVID now, and kind of the new normal that we're talking about. So some considerations for outdoor usage. Establishments must complete, complete an application, and we have a pretty robust application through our portal. It goes around, again, to all of the departments. You saw a few of them today, and I think it's a great way. You see what every department has seen it. We're not waiting for someone. Applicant must provide own tables, chairs, specific area restrictions, and their coverings. We don't give them tables or chairs, although I think a few of us had put, have put some together for some of the businesses over the years. They must follow mass and local Board of Health Safety protocols. And I know I harp on no bar seating, but I get a lot of questions, can we have a bar there? And the answer is no. I think it's for dining and for more of that area. So Wakefield adopted a lot of this, allow businesses to utilize these public spaces for business activities. Zoning issues are relaxed, as we talked about. Footprints for liquor license can be off by the town council. Adherence to state and local guidelines, clear application. I have a couple of differences in Bold this year that I would like the council to consider. Area to be designated mirrors facade limit. So in other words, I think that we are, you know, we don't have the same restrictions on indoor use that we had before. And we are very liberal in letting businesses going past their, their storefront footage, right? I'm saying that maybe we should mirror their facade. I think it's a little bit--
I agree.
fairer, for lack of a better word. Hours to reflect their regular business hours. And I put in there May 1st to December 1st. I don't think anybody will go to December 1st. We're not as hearty as maybe some people are. May 1st is a startup date, which is contingent upon a lot of things happening, including having approval from the legislature on this. Application of the portal I talked about. And Bold Town to provide barriers, and hold on to that one for a second. Business cares for the area. They're in charge of their area and the barriers. And they're in charge of caring for the barriers, and I'll show you that in a second. And these can be revoked at any time. There is, at any time that we found that it's been abused, it's been, we have a snowstorm, we have a whatever, we can, we can revoke that at any time. That probably goes more towards the end. You know, if they're still out there on November 1st and we have a snowstorm coming, we may have to pull them right away. So I have been asked, or mentioned many times by Counselor Santos, who I guess occasionally goes out of town.
Occasionally.
Occasionally. And you mentioned the Andover ones.
They're so nice.
Which are flowered, and we have reached out to the area where they got them, the vendor where they got them. I think these would be great. I would think the town could provide them. We could use them in other areas. We could use them for events that we have, and really would give some nice uniformity. And the plantings on those, which maybe you can't, I can't see without my glasses on, but if you put them on, you can see them. The businesses would have to take care of them.
Beautiful.
Okay. Another thing that I will talk to the businesses about is that I wanna make sure they're trying to, they're making every attempt, if not completely complying, with what was mentioned in the school department today about the styrofoam and things like that. If we're gonna give them something, they should really work with us better. So what I would ask that the council do this evening is to authorize the town administrator, with inputs from Health Agent and Emergency Command and Director, to approve alteration of liquor license and food service footprints for both public and private spaces. Private, really, it's just the, the extension of their liquor license. Allow retail to enter the public way, provide, provided access is sufficient. And consider requirement of uniform if you have barriers, barriers. And I would consider that is a use in that business bucket for opera funds. So I think, you know, personally, I've heard from a lot of people, a number of people who are still a little hesitant about going inside. They really enjoy the vibrancy out there. I know that when it first, we first started outdoor dining, boy, was it like, it was like Christmas morning for everybody that was out there. And they were really, people hadn't seen each other in months and probably broke every COVID protocol at the time, because people were hugging and, and seeing. But there are a lot of people that have stopped me, in fact, I had a couple that stopped me a couple of weeks ago outside. And it was a beautiful, that beautiful Friday, it was 70 degrees. And asked me, do you have any outdoor dining? And I said, oh geez, you know, we have a place that opens windows, but not yet. Because they were still hesitant about going inside. So I think we have to be very conscious of that. So I'd like to be able to proceed with this if and when it happens. Again, we've had a lot of businesses contact us about this, so that's where I am, open for questions.
Counselor Burris?
I really like the idea of the uniformity. I think that, that adds a whole different dimension to this, which is important. I, I don't know that it has to be necessarily explicit in this policy, but I think back to a certain business on Water Street that had like a very tall kind of barrier.
Yeah.
And it, it was, it was not the most visually appealing.
Right.
And so the idea of having any kind of, you know, modifications, I think should be prohibited. You know, I think we have this and it's, it's safe. The other piece to it is the ability to have some sort of outdoor heaters. And I know, like, in the past, that was, that's, that's been important, especially in the spring, especially at night. So being able to allow for that as long as, you know, we're in accordance with whatever the fire department. And I don't know if they have certain standards.
And that's, that's okay with the, with the umbrellas. The tents prohibited that as well.
Exactly, right. But I just think now we're to a point where we can kind of focus more on the aesthetic of this, because the functionality, we know, we know works, but let's focus on the aesthetic and try to make it so that it feels more inviting.
Yeah.
This is my legacy.
This is your legacy. You're gonna name them, Anne Santos barriers.
But the uniformity, I don't know if you, people have driven through Andover when they have it up. The uniformity is beautiful, and the flowers, and it just, it really makes a huge difference, so.
I'm for it. I love it.
Can, can I ask that we just think about maybe one or two that are not affiliated with an existing business? Where just anybody, if you got a coffee at a coffee shop that you could sit down? I mean, if we're buying the barriers, is there one or two places that we can, can have more of a public? Where people could take a piece of pizza or a coffee and go, go and sit down? I know other towns have done that. I know it's more complex, you know, you have probably furniture you have to keep care of and, but--
Yeah, I think we can certainly look at that, yeah.
I've said before, I think the Greenwood schools, particularly in the summer, when the schools close, like that front, you know, doing it kind of--
On the lawn.
On the lawn, yeah, because I think it's not that bad of a walk. I also think, as there are less people commuting to, using the commuter rail, particularly the Greenwood stop, all those parking spots are not being used, right? It's a little bit of a walk from the restaurants. But I think if people know there's picnic benches and a nice area to sit, maybe we put a little bocce set or something, you know? Like, we can actually make it those little parklet area as a trial, kind of think about it. But, you know, people could grab something from Blue Moon, walk over, especially if we have the uniform, like, they know what they're looking for. But I love that idea of just kind of thinking beyond, because there are, you know, smaller coffee shops don't do it, or, you know, the ice cream shop--
Their facade would be so teeny, right? It would be so narrow.
So I think looking at maybe like a, you know--
Andover has that.
Yeah.
Melrose has it, it's fabulous. Melrose did it too, of just kind of like--
Right in the downtown.
Areas.
Okay, we can identify some spaces.
Yeah. And we can probably sell the Adirondack chairs from the front of the--
Yeah, we'll put, put those probably back up in the library.
Front of the library, yeah.
Yeah, that's nice.
Great. So do you need us to vote on this?
I think I'd like a motion to go forward with this pending, you know, legislation and whatever.
Okay, so do we have a motion to move forward with the public, what were we calling it? Okay, I ask one more question? Because we are using the-- The Anne Santos boundaries? So we are, it's not just the sidewalk, right? It'll go on to the parking place?
No, it'll go, it'll be parking, yeah.
Okay, okay. So we need a motion to adopt the--
Anne Santos uniformity barrier.
Anne Santos public use of--
It gets the pick, you get the barrier.
That's right. I get the styrofoam barrier alone, like, cool one there.
Make a motion based on--
We're all winners in this.
On Steve's recommendations.
It's seconded.
Okay, so a motion made by Counselor Santos and seconded by Counselor Burris.
And just discussion, this doesn't cost the businesses anything, right? There's no license or fee or anything. Just wanted to make sure.
Following the Boston controversy.
Yeah, I know, not the, the Mayo North End, the Mayo North End policy.
Counselor Combras.
The only thing that I would think is, I know that some businesses have, that are not participating, have expressed concern about parking. And I, I, Mr. Mayo, perhaps we could work on some, almost even consider temporary signage, redirecting people. We have the Daily Item Lot, for instance, where we have a good amount of spots available. But I think just letting people know that, so that, because I understand if you, if you're a business that is doing business on Main Street and you don't, you know--
And other, other streets as well.
And other streets, yeah, for that matter. So to the extent we can, you know, be thoughtful about how we can, you know, present that information to people too, so that they know.
Or they could take it right and just park on the street.
Or we could put up some bike racks and--
Yeah, well, exactly.
I'm just, no, I know what you mean, but there's plenty of parking.
Well, especially on the weekends too, I think people will find it, you know, to be the case. But I, I think just being, highlighting that is part of our--
People, because the barriers are up all week. They're not gonna come up.
Exact, no, exactly, right, yeah.
And I think this does really follow what we have looked at in our, when we did our surveys and what have you. That people really want the outdoor usage, so.
The community aspect of it, when we've had it, has been really nice. I mean, people just are out more, they're talking more, they're interacting. I mean, it, it does make downtown feel more vibrant and feel more welcoming to people than I, I think it's historically been, so.
And we have reached out to certain entities that maybe at certain times, they, they need to preserve, reserve some spaces for, you know, you know, specific usage, and we'll give them cones and signs, you know, Sunday morning and things like that, basically. So that's kind of worked out, okay.
I'll just remind people too that we had been talking about things like placemaking and outdoor dining pre-pandemic through the Envision Project in like, in 2018 and 2019. And at the time, some naysayers were saying, well, yeah, that's a great plan if you're in Florida. And now, they're the first ones to be sitting out there. So it's really kind of, you know, I think reset a lot of people's thinking. But I think this goes to show, you know, like, we, we as a town, yet again, we're ahead of the curve on that.
That's right. Forward thinking.
So, Anne, you're gonna come and like, do some gardening for some people, right?
I was thinking letting her cut the ribbon, but maybe the gardening will put you to work.
Sounds good.
You're gonna have all this time on your hands.
Exactly.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we've had discussion. All in favor?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Motion passes seven to zero. Annual town meeting, we need to reset the-- Motion passes seven to zero. Annual town meeting, we need to reset the date to May 16th.
That's due to school, some school issues that we ran into over there. So if the council would agree to having town meeting, which we can make later, as town council has told us, per the, per Mass General Law, to have the May 16th date to start town meeting. And if we have to go a second day, it would be May 23rd, which, just, so people know, we don't have to vote on that.
And that's a 7:00 PM start at Galvin Middle School.
At Galvin Middle School, yes.
Okay. So I have a motion to change the start of town meeting to May 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Councilor Santos. Any additional discussion? Councilor Chines?
Just a question. Do, are, do we need to consider changing the date that we close the warrant?
We did extend it pretty, pretty far to April 7th. So I think that will still let us get to the council on the 11th.
Okay.
So we can post the warrant, and we're going to try to post a warrant for the election and the town meeting together, because we do save some money.
Okay.
And it's all within the statutory times.
Okay.
So if we waited to the 25th, it would be, we wouldn't have enough time anyway if we extended it past our meeting of the 11th.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good question. Any additional discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of changing the town meeting to May 16th? All opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we need to set a public hearing for April 11th at 7:03 PM for a liquor license for L and B LLC, doing business as Laurie's 909, located at 93 New Salem Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Councilor Santos. Any discussion on this? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Item 14, this is a, there's a letter in our packet, the, is it Cowdrey?
Cowdrey Fund, yes.
Cowdrey Fund. Some interest that needs to be transferred. I guess I'll read it and then we'll do a motion. Do you want to, do you want to give any explanation?
Sure, I can. So the Cowdrey Fund was money that was left to the town years and years and years ago. And this hasn't happened since 2016 that we've, you know, actually been requested to kick some of the interest out to the Garden Club. But it was set up with that intent. And, you know, oftentimes, the, the club would, let's let it roll for a few years. We can do, you know, what's a few hundred dollars, let's do it and make more of a splash. So they did reach out to us this year, had to check on it. And there's, you know, close to $3,000 in interest, almost 2,800. That is not town money. It was a donation, a grant, or a legacy to the town. And they like to use it for some garden improvements. And the Garden Club does a fabulous job.
I wonder if they'd like to plant some barriers.
I actually, just at our, earlier at our volunteer event, Donna Murphy is on the Garden Club. And so she said, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna vote on this. And they're really excited. I mean, $2,200 is a lot. It's a couple of years. They've got projects lined up. We will have to mention the things to them.
I'm kidding. I'm sure they have wonderful things lined up.
They're really excited. It, they have all these projects that, you know, they needed the funds for. So this will go a long way.
Great. Okay, so I think I will just, so basically, there's interest being transferred from 2016 through 2021 for a total of $2,794.61 from the Cowdrey Fund to the Wakefield Garden Club.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Councilor Santos. Any additional discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Announcements.
Councilor Bumbrowski?
I'll just announce to everyone that it's a very exciting weekend coming up. It is the opening of the pit for the season. And we have extended hours like we have never had in, in modern history for the pit. So we have every, every Saturday and Sunday expanded hours on the second and fourth Sunday of the month and every Wednesday as well. So please get your permits from Town Hall if you haven't already, and I'll see you down there on Saturday. Thanks.
We're expecting a video.
It's entirely possible.
Councilor Chines?
Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. First of all, the Gator Gallup benefiting the Greenwood PTO is coming up on April 9th, so a week from Saturday at 8 o'clock at Lake Quanipowhatz. So good, good chance to get out there and enjoy that. I also did want to recognize, we, we didn't cover this at our last meeting, but this past St. Patrick's Day was the 100th anniversary of the cornerstone laid for the BB Library, which is really kind of a neat piece of history that, you know, I, I think is a great part of the legacy that the library has here in the community. I know they're going to be doing a number of things throughout the year to kind of recognize the centennial, but really is something that, again, I think we should all be proud of and be happy to celebrate. And then finally, just wanted to mention that the Disabilities Commission is hosting a screening and discussion of the film Intelligent Lives, actually at the Galvin on April 11th at, at 6:30. So if you're not at this meeting, a great opportunity to take part in a, in a great discussion. And, you know, one that I think is, is something that's really timely, is we talk about, you know, some of the movies that were recognized last night at the Oscars and so forth, you know, about the lives of individuals with different disabilities and, and, you know, the, the impact that they have on our, on our world.
And I figured we would catch that on replay, but they cannot video record it just because of licensing. So if people want to see it, they really need to go that night, which I think is good, because there'll be a lot of discussion.
Absolutely.
So while we're going to miss it, we hope everybody else gets to go.
I mentioned it earlier, just wanted to thank Sheri and Steve and Julie for the volunteer event earlier today. 192 volunteers?
I think that's what the number comes to.
190 we have in our town. And everyone does such great work. As we had Benny, we, co-chair of the Human Rights Commission, everyone who volunteers in our town goes above and beyond. And everyone got these buttons. I don't know if you're going to soup into it, but all volunteers got this great button. You got it, Ryan? Awesome. So we just, I just did want to take a moment to thank the organizers of that. Ed started it a couple of years ago. Glad that we were able to do it again. I think it'll be an annual tradition. It was very nice. So thank you. I reminded last meeting, and I'm going to do it again, if you want a community garden plot, applications are due by April 1st. We have over 80 applications. Two of us at this table have applied. Three of us. Nice. Steve, if you need another location for a garden, it's a great location.
I'm going to sell plots in my yard.
I have not won one yet, so.
So it is, it is, you know, one of my favorite things in town. And April 1st, and then there'll probably be an online lottery, is how Dan kind of runs it. So everyone to know that. And then just to let everyone know, the month of Ramadan for Muslims starts April 2nd. It's our month of fasting, from sunrise to sunset. So please be nice to your Muslim friends who are fasting. But it's a great, it's a contemplative spiritual month with a big celebration at the end. So stay tuned about the celebrations.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Sorry. One other thing. Sorry. I forgot to mention, the Master Plan Workshop coming up. And thanks to Councilor Danahue for her work on that as well. But April 6th, that's 6:30 on Zoom. Great opportunity for people to get involved, particularly as, as we're thinking about, you know, what do we want the town to look like? And how do we take the work that we did in Vision 2030 and really carry that forward in terms of a coherent and comprehensive plan for Wakefield?
Yeah. And the advisory group has been really wonderful. It's been, it's been a fantastic group led by the NA PC. So I'm really looking forward to it.
Steve, Tom, Sheri, anybody?
All good. Thank you.
Okay. Matters not anticipated for the agenda. Steve, I did just want to get an update on the oil spill on the Mill River.
Yes. So over the weekend, I was out looking at the Mill River. I believe Friday afternoon, the chair was out there as well. So basically, what did happen is there was a, a kind of a spill that occurred a few weeks ago in the Water and Farm Street area. It was mainly diesel fueled. And it did get cleaned up by a company, Commonwealth Tank. And apparently some of the residue got into some of the storm drains and hadn't been, you know, completely removed. So with all of the rain the past few days, this kind of came up and went, decided to go down the Mill River. So our fire department, DPW, particularly Deputy Chief Purcell, Tommy Purcell, was out there with the representatives from DEP and Commonwealth Tank, more, I call them berms. I know that Julie calls them booms.
I call them booms.
Booms. They were put out there. They, DEP is handling the, or supervising the remediation. They will revacuum and walk, wash out the storm drains, as they also going to go up and down the river, really down the river, to free up and clean various pockets of debris and oil that has gone down there. So I think a really good response by our fire department and our DPW guys, who did go and walk a lot of the river, you know, both ways to make sure that, hey, you know, where did this happen? Because there's always a question, need to isolate it and where it happened. And getting DEP out there right away was, was great. So the town is on it. I know there's might have been some scuttlebutt about where, when it came from. But it was a kind of a diesel spill from a, from a truck that was being filled up at, in that Water and Farm area, more towards Wiley Street.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just confirming, you just said that, but nothing to do with 383 Water Street?
Nothing to do with that, yeah. I didn't want to single out the individuals, but nothing to do with that.
But nothing to do with that.
Absolutely. Zero.
Great.
Zero. We actually walked that to make sure. Yeah.
Any other matters not anticipated? Okay, so we can adjourn. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, April 11th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Councilor Santos. Discussion? All in favor? Five. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. We'll see you on April 11th.